Being in the right time, the right place with all the right people in the room, I think we can convene the meeting. So, let me read the governor's orders first, as this is a hybrid meeting. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the address listed below, and it is possible that all members of the public body may attend remotely, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. This meeting may be accessed, again, by the link provided in the agenda. When required by law or allowed by the chairperson's wishes to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting, may do so by in-person attendance or by accessing the meeting remotely, as noted above. Additionally, this meeting will be broadcast live, in real time, via Verizon Channel 28 and Charter Channel 192, or via Westboro TV's online platforms at westbrowtv.org and youtube.com/westbrowtv. At this time, I'd like to thank Westboro TV for providing this service to the community. For all those that would like to join us, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'll open it up for open forum. Is there anyone here for open forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, Stormwater Utility Update and Information. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Pant, Director of Public Works. Very briefly, just recapping that we've implemented the stormwater utility. The first quarter bills went out in July. Culmination of a lot of effort by a lot of people, including the Assessor Department, the Treasurer Collector Office, DPW, and many others. So, we've had some questions, we're answering them, we've had a few hiccups, we've corrected them. It's the first time we've ever done it, so we're working through any issues we have, but I think we're on the right path. I know everybody may not be happy about receiving a new fee in the mail, but I think ultimately, as we recommended, you know, many months and even years ago, in terms of the importance of this, I think we're going to see some real value to the community with this utility over the next, you know, multiple years, really for a long time. And so, I just wanted to, you know, provide feedback to you that we've, I know you're aware, but I wanted to publicly say we're in motion and on our way, and if people do have questions, we've got a pretty solid website that has a lot of historical information that people can refer to, otherwise, call us. So, unless there's any questions, that's it.
Terrific. Any questions? Shelby? Sean? Ian? Sean? No. Well, thank you, Chris, for coming and sharing that with us. It's always good to hear how the progress is going, so thank you.
Thanks. I'm up for the next one, so.
Yes, that's right. I was thinking you are. All right, item number three, Request to Execute Drainage License on Lyman Street.
So, everybody, I think, is familiar with the project that's going on, Lyman Street, with Pulte and the Dell website. It's been in progress for several years. Early on in the project development, there was an agreement between Pulte and the state as to where their stormwater would go. It leaves the Pulte property, and then it goes across Lyman Street and to state property. The state withdrew their agreement because they were going to do some development at the site, and that required and triggered some, a lot of work between Pulte, the town, Decam, and Northborough to figure out, you know, where we were going to, how we were going to address this issue. And the issue includes the town, because we also have stormwater infrastructure there as well. So, over the course of the last eighteen months or so, we've collectively been working on this problem and came to the conclusion, which is this agreement, which allows us, the town, and with Pulte's cooperation, to install some drainage that goes around essentially the development that's planned for the state, and, you know, deposits the water in a wetland, which included, you know, components in Northborough, so we had to go through that process, which we did. And so, this agreement just solidifies all of that and allows us to move forward on installing that drainage and getting this part of the project complete.
Okay.
So, we're just asking you to sign the agreement, if you agree.
Okay. So, I'll open it up to the board, if there's any questions, or?
Just one question. Does this change the cost to the town from what was originally planned?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Maybe along those lines, Chris. Does this drainage help Westboro's roads, wetlands, and in, I read something about maybe filtration where there wasn't before, so?
Yeah, it's definitely improvements. There were originally two sources where water was leaving different pipes, now it's consolidated to one, it throws, it's going to flow through. And the reason why the original agreement was Pulte and the state, and now it's us, Pulte, and the state, is because the Pulte stormwater flows into town infrastructure, and then it's town infrastructure that gets it out to where it needs to go. And so, there's some coordination that has to happen there. But the infrastructure that's going to be installed is new, and it's going to be to stormwater standards that are more appropriate for today versus the stuff that's in there is from many decades ago. So, it's an improvement to the town, and we benefit collectively from the new infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you.
Ian or Sean? Any questions? No.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. The one question I had was, I didn't see, is the work actually planned for a particular date, or do you have that on the calendar? Maybe I missed it.
Uh, I don't know the specific date, but it's intended to happen as soon as we get this agreement.
Okay, so this fall, right?
Yep, so they want to get it done as soon as possible, yes.
So, yeah, Chris, I just have one question for you. Just reading through the document, I noticed in Section Three, Purpose and Use, it lists in the second paragraph, it talks about Exhibit A, and I was kind of expecting to see a diagram. I don't know if it's my packet, the fact that I'm on a Mac, but there is no picture. There is nothing, there is no Exhibit A. So, I don't, I know the general area, but maybe you can kind of give me a better description of where on Lyman Street? Is it, is it right there on the town line between Northborough and Westborough?
Yep, it's right there at the town line, so there's some drainage structures on Pulte that collect water, other detention basins and others, and then that water is consolidated to various pipes that then cross the street, essentially at the town line, and then there's a long pipe that runs straight out into basically a field, but?
So, it's kind of before you hit that curve going around in that area?
Yes, yes. If you know where the, I think it's kind of an auction yard type thing, and you drive by there today, you see much cars. So, if you're looking at that, it's to the left of that, because that property is what's going to be developed, and so we had to shift further towards Northborough to avoid the building or whatever they're going to put in at that property site.
Okay. And do you anticipate it's going to go clearly across, all the way across the road, so both lanes of traffic at some point will be affected during this process?
Uh, it will cross the road, but it's a minimal impact to, in terms of traffic or slowing people down.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right, so I think there was a motion in our packet.
Sure. I move to approve the non-exclusive long-form license to use state-owned real property as presented, and further to authorize the chair to execute the license on the board's behalf.
Second.
Any further questions? All right, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Kio, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it. So, moving on to item four, Request for Select Board's Signature on Warrant for State Primary Election of the Town Clerk. Welcome, Deb.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with the official warrant for the September third state primary election, and I'm respectfully asking that you sign it so that I can get it posted as required by law. I just want to make just a couple of quick comments. For anybody listening, early voting for the state primary election starts this Saturday, August 24th, Town Hall between nine and three, up here in Memorial Hall. It's also the last date of register to vote for the state primary election. We will be open nine to five. Residents are welcome, if you're not already registered to vote, to come in before five o'clock. If you can't make it into Town Hall, you could also go online to mass.gov, register there, and you will get a confirmation notice sent to your home. And also, just so everybody knows, Election Day, all voting is at the high school, at 90 West Main Street. Polls open at seven, and they close at 8:00 PM.
And that is September 3rd, correct?
September 3rd, Tuesday, the day after Labor Day.
Day after Labor.
Yeah. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Ian, Sean, any questions? No.
I guess, the only question I had, Patrick, was, it sounds like this has to be signed tonight, we're okay with having just the three folk sign?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, thank you, Deb. Do you want to leave it, or do you want us to do it right now?
So, I move to approve the request of the town clerk to sign the 2024 state primary warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Ian, yes.
Edinburgh, yes. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Three copies.
Yep.
Thank you, Deb. All right, so moving on to item five, Request to Install Flyer and Lawn Sign on Town Property to Advertise Sustainable Westboro Regional Electric Vehicle Expo from Sustainable Westboro. And I see Jeff Levine, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and share your request with us.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Levine. I'm here representing Sustainable Westboro. Sustainable Westboro has an annual electric vehicle show. The intent is to encourage and to educate the town people who are interested in learning more about electric vehicles. It is actually a regional show. We involve people from surrounding communities. This is our fourth year holding the show. The most challenging part of the show is getting the word out to people, both the, getting people who are EV owners to bring their vehicles to the show, as well as people who are interested in attending the show. In past years, this board has been good enough to allow us to post a lawn sign at the golf club, as well as post a sign at the EV chargers, which is our best way of getting the word out to people who actually own EVs. So, I'm here asking if the select board will once again allow us to do both of those things, post a sign at the EV chargers, as well as lawn sign at the golf club.
Terrific. And just a little bit of publicity for the event, it's September 29th, two to five o'clock at the, at 50 Oda Street. Rain date is October 6th, so we hope all can come and join us for the event. And also, I'll just say, we're also looking for volunteers to help out with the event, so.
That's not true, yes.
So, I'll open it up to discussion. Questions? Comments?
So, are these signs to recruit EV owners, or to get, make people aware of the event?
So, it's both. The signs on the chargers are to recruit EV owners, and the lawn sign is for visitors to get people to come and participate.
Okay. Where, how else are you advertising? Are you putting?
So, we'll have lawn signs throughout the town. We're asking the community advocate to put an article in the paper, which they have been good enough to do in the past. We make extensive use of social media. Those are the primary means. The lawn signs from our past surveys are the way most people have found out about the event.
Interesting. I was just going to ask, have you arranged to advertise on the digital billboards?
Yes, that as well, yes. Good point.
So, I had made a comment, just that I think a lot of the events that we have in town would have lawn signs, and we sometimes pull lawn signs from that very location. So, I think last year, I know that you allowed it, but I think there was some confusion because there are the two types of signs. So, I just think that it's something I want to raise, because I do think that that request could come from other groups.
Okay. Ian or Sean, any comments or questions?
So, yes, sorry, so, I apologize for the echo bothering, but, so it's, I know in the past, we did the labels or whatever that were on the EV charging stations at the golf course, which sounds like it's for the exhibitor. So, Christie, what you're saying is, the sign that's advertising for folks to attend is the one that might be the one we have issues with?
I was just saying that I think other groups might make similar requests, and we haven't allowed that in the past, except for last year, related to this event.
And just to follow up to Ian's question, then, is, do we have a policy? Like, what policy are we referencing?
It's a bylaw.
The bylaw, okay.
Yeah, so, you can't put signs in public ways without the board's permission.
But the bylaw doesn't state what the criteria are for those signs, right? It's up to the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So, anytime any organization who puts a sign on a public way that didn't come before the board, that's when you're pulling the sign, but in the event that somebody goes through the process, they could be eligible if the board chose?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's similar to the signs on the Rotary policy that you have, where you're specific about it, because there are certain signs that you wouldn't want to see there.
Yep.
And last year, there was, again, two signs, two, you know, in the ground signs, plus the other, that's, I'm just reading the notes from last year, that's what we approved.
So, I mean, being that this is, so my vote of support is that this is a, Sustainable Westboro is part of the town's kind of committee in governance, and this event is being put on by that group, so that is the foundation of my support for this.
I would equally also support this, the signs to be placed there, because I think it's an appropriate place, being that the EV car chargers are right there, it's an ideal location, and it's for a specific purpose, and again, it's a town committee. So, it's, I think it's a, not an exception to the rule, it is within the rules, I'll say, so.
Yeah.
Any other?
So, I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the posting of flyers on the two charging stations at the golf club to recruit EV owners for the EV Expo, and to allow for the placement of lawn sign as presented at the, in front of the golf club, and I probably need the address, what's the number, someone help me out? One?
It's 121.
121 West Main Street.
Any second? Ian, did you have a question, or did you want a second?
I do, but I?
I will second.
I can wait for a second.
Okay.
So, back to the piece, I guess I'm just concerned of, you know, we have other, if we have other departments, you know, posting out there where else we may allow, so I know we have arts and common stuff coming up next, so I'm assuming if they want to post there, but then the question is, can they, are we allowing them posting on other town properties, or what's the, what's our thinking there?
I guess the way I think of it is, it's a case-by-case basis as to what's being proposed by the person who would like to, or the organization that would like to post on the property.
So, we do have other locations, right? Like, the, Ian, you've been here longer than I have, where West Main branches off and Route 30 continues toward Grafton, that kind of fork in the road?
Yeah, Ward's Corner.
Thank you. And I regularly see various signs placed there. Go ahead, Kristen.
That's the one location where people are allowed, anyone's allowed to post signs.
Anyone's allowed to post there, so just for the public's benefit, I think that's important, so, even though that is town property.
Right, so, the people are allowed to post signs there, they can advertise on the digital signboard, they can advertise on the billboards, and then if they had banners for light poles, they could go through our office under the policy. As far as it being a case-by-case basis, I mean, I guess if it's something that the board is open to allowing at this point, we should probably look to create a policy for that location. This is the, last year was the only year I'm aware of that we've done that.
So, again, I guess I would be, I'm in supportive of it, particularly because of, as Patrick already stated, the location of the chargers being there, and that's sort of a magnet, for lack of a better way to say it, for people that are using chargers and kind of familiar with that location, as we don't have any others that I'm aware of in town that are publicly accessible. So, I think, I think this is supporting a town event, it's not a private organization asking to do it, although I do think we should probably have a policy, because I'm sure it will come up for other uses.
Is that particular piece of property on Ward's Corner down there on West Main Street, is that a bylaw? Is that where, is it a bylaw?
I think it's a previous select board vote. It's not a specific policy, but it's, it's been that way for years, that that's the one location folks are allowed to put signs.
Okay. Ian, did that help with your question?
It did, I guess it's, I'm actually going to vote against this, I just, not that I'm not in support of Sustainable Westboro, I just think it's, without the policy and, you know, in that spot, I think it just potentially opens up potential can of worms before we have in place a policy, so. But I'm okay with going forward with the vote.
Sean, did you want to? Go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, I think in this instance, you know, I'm okay with it. Thing it does, it's specifically here that it will be posted next the road in front of the charging station, correct? So, sort of adjacent to those, rather than somewhere else on the property. So, I think I'm, in this case, okay with it, but I understand what Christie's saying, and that, you know, if this is something that we're going to allow on an annual basis, you know, shouldn't we just update, make some sort of update to the policy?
I'm happy to amend the motion, if that helps the board in terms of the location of the actual lawn sign on the property.
Maybe that'd be a good idea, and I, we also, I believe last year, stated that it had to be removed in a particular time period as well, so I don't know if that would help with any concerns.
So, I would amend the motion to place a sign on the lawn as near as possible, nearest the charging stations facing West Main Street, and to be removed, is it a Saturday or Sunday?
Proposed date that you want to?
Immediately following the event, it'll either be September 29th or October 6th, if it's a rain date.
Okay, okay.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. Ian?
Johnson, no.
Sean?
Kio, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great.
Moving on to item six, Public Art Installation on Town Property from the Cultural Council. Welcome, ladies, come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Tracy Spatafora. I'm a member of the Arts and Common Committee and a, can't hear me?
They can hear you in the mic, no problem, but I can't hear you this far, so maybe just make it a little louder for us.
I am Tracy Spatafora. I'm a member of the Arts and Common Committee and also a member of the Westboro Cultural Council.
Terrific.
I'm Maureen Johnson. I'm a member of the Cultural Council and on the Arts and Common Committee as well.
Great, well, welcome.
Thanks.
All right, share with us what's going on.
So, we, we had an artist who does public art that was interested in writing a grant to paint some switch boxes in Westboro. There's two locations, one on the corner of Lyman and Main Street, and then one on Main Street across from the Westboro House of Pizza. Before we, before the artist proposed the grant, I did check with the DPW to see if that would be okay with them for her to paint the switch boxes, and they had no problem with it. I also checked with Christie, and Maureen was in on the whole thing. So, Jill Straight, who is the woman that wrote the grant, we awarded her, the Westboro Cultural Council awarded her a grant in October, actually, it was for this coming year, to do the, paint the switch boxes. It was all hinging on our public art policy to make sure that that was actually approved before the, you know, she started the project. The public art policy was approved last month, but the problem is, is we don't have a public art committee yet. So, in the meantime, until we get a chance to, you know, have?
Create the committee.
Create the committee. The Westboro Cultural Council was going to basically be, you know, approving and submitting the projects to the select board. So, essentially, that's what Maureen and I are doing tonight. We are, Maureen sent you the materials about what Jill had proposed to paint on switch boxes, and, you know, the materials she was going to be using, and basically her timeline. So, we're just here to see if you?
And we're not trying to rush it through, but we gave her the grant for 2024, and it, you need to finish your grant within a year, that's MCC rules. So, if she doesn't start painting now, since it's an outdoor project, it's not going to end well. So, we're not trying to push this through, but we do finally have the art policy in place, and so what we really are asking for now is, will you give the Cultural Council the authority for this project, having seen all the, all the information and the approvals we've gotten? Will you give us the authority to give her the okay to actually start painting? And in the meantime, we are actually creating that public art committee. We just need to advertise for that, and Cela had asked us about that. So, by, I think Friday, we will have the specifics of that, and we will advertise just like for any other, you know, committee in town, you know, on the, on Westboro Town website, and the Cultural Council will do some sort of outreach to people we think may be appropriate to be on that committee, but just like, you know, asking for letters of interest, and then they will be appointed by the select board, so.
Terrific. Thank you for bringing this to us. I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Yeah, so I think it would be helpful for the public to actually see the work of Jill. It's beautiful, so thank you for, first of all, thank you for a very comprehensive packet, really kind of walking us through the progression of this request, and how it's coming before us before the, the public art committee is standing up, I understand that. I think it's a great project, I'm fully supportive of it, and I think the style of the work that she's choosing to do is, I don't want to speak for you guys, but can you just describe kind of the work? It's like an outdoor kind of theme?
Sorry, Silicon plug-in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nature, and, you know, she's interested in sustainability too, so she's choosing, you know, wildlife and fauna that's, you know?
And although, although what's pictured here is not wildlife and fauna, this is an example of her work.
Yeah, just maybe scroll through these, because there's some beautiful examples.
Yes, so.
Keep going, Cela.
Yeah. I mean, but just, again, I think it's just when you think about these boxes that normally are just sort of green.
Or gray.
Or gray, or? Or gray, or, yeah, very pretty.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all over, you know, there's a lot of, um, you know, towns that have these switch box. And, and it's a pretty, as far as public art goes, so that's the one there. Um, it is, you know, not, like, you're not really having to change anything like to in, the installation or, you know, so it's, it's a really kind of easy public art project. Um, that the town doesn't really have to invest, you know, any sort of resources in. So, um, we thought, you know, since we, you know, got this public art policy on and we just wanted to get it going and, and get some visibility in the town so we get some interest in public art and, um, maybe get more proposals and funds and all of that stuff.
That's great, I, fully supportive, well, well-planned project and thank you for bringing it forward.
Alan, Sean, Ian, anybody?
All right. Check with Ian and Sean, but I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, Alan, uh, excuse me, Ian or Sean, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, I thank, uh, thank you for bringing this forward. Um, a little shout out to the cultural council, there are open seats on that committee if folks are interested and they do some great work for the town. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm very supportive as well, uh, having many family members who are artists. Um, it's great to see this being brought to our community, I think it's just, it's going to be beautiful to see it and it's an area that I drive by regularly, so I'm looking forward to seeing this artwork. I was also glad to see that, um, there was consideration for anti, um, graffiti in regards to the way that it'll be sealed and treated, uh, after it's, the, the artwork is applied. So, um, I'm, I'm very excited to see, uh, and the creativity and the wildlife from the flowers to the, um, the fauna and the flowers. So it's great. Um, well, I guess I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the painting of the two utility boxes as presented under the direction of the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ian?
Uh, Johnson, yes.
Sean?
CEO, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you. I'm just going to stay right here.
Yeah. So we'll, uh, we'll move on to item, uh, seven, request to serve alcohol on town property, Bay State Commons and Westboro Cultural Council, so welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so this is, um, something that we've done for, I think, four years, um, Arts and Common on Bay State Commons. This is the 14th annual Arts and Common and I think it was four years ago we actually decided to add a beer garden, um, to the event, which was, um, very successful. Um, so this would be, this request, I've filled out the paperwork, but it's a request for a one-day liquor license. And, um, uh, we've never had a problem in the past and our- Police chief can attest to that. We've run a good, we've gone, we've run a good show, so, um, just a request for that.
So similar to the central house, this is typically, one-day liquor licenses are typically handled through my office, but because it's on public property, the board has to approve that.
Okay, opening up for questions? Ian? Sean? No? Alan? No? No? Okay, all right, I'll look for a motion.
Okay. I move to grant a one-day liquor license to Maureen Johnson on behalf of the Westboro Cultural Council for an event on October 5, 2024 from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Bay State Commons with an address of 1100 Union Street and is municipally owned property contingent upon the following. One, only products manufactured by Craft Life Brewing Company LLC DBA Start Line Brewing may be sold and consumed on the premises. Only alcohol purchased from this vendor may be consumed on the premises. Two, this license may only be exercised in a district demarcated premises, I'm sorry, for, in a distinct demarcated premise for both alcohol service and consumption. The premises must be enclosed by a physical barrier and no alcohol is allowed to leave the premises. Three, only structures that have been, that have passed an inspection of town permitting departments may be used. Four, all individuals who are verified to be age 21 plus, we will need to wear a wristband while on the premises. And five, no individuals under 21 will be allowed on the premises.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote, uh, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
CEO, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you doing this.
See you on October 5th.
Absolutely. Moving on to item eight, a request to install temporary sign on town property at Dr. Solomon Carter Fuller Way.
Welcome. Essek Petry with Pulte Homes. Uh, this is a request that we submitted in early July to the building inspector's office and we've been talking with Fred and it feels like it kind of got bounced around a little bit. We, uh, then met with planning board, uh, last week or maybe the week before on this, uh, and, and they approved and Fred spoke in favor of it as well. Uh, essentially, just to back up a little bit, sorry, um, we've been receiving just some requests and complaints from the, um, homeowners at Chauncey Lake, um, regarding truck, construction truck traffic going, uh, through per, uh, past the clubhouse and accessing the kind of the rear, uh, phase of the project from that direction. And so we were looking to just install this sign at the, um, the hospital road or Dr. Carter Solomon Fuller Road entrance just to remind the truck drivers that that's, that's the route they should be going. It's, it's, it's already a route that is available to them and, and is used. Um, there are just, um, timed when a truck driver either misses it or, or doesn't know that that's, that's the access road.
Questions?
Yeah. Uh, so I appreciate you mentioning that this is an existing route and so that's a, a part of the permit that was allowed for, uh, traffic, just to be clear, for construction traffic.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, so, I mean, I saw the pictures of the sign, they s, minimal, they seem tasteful, that's fine. And they'll be there for a period of about two d, two years, correct?
No, it'll probably be closer to five, just, um, just from the length, we've, we're about halfway through.
Okay.
Um, so it's probably going to be closer to five before we're completely, um, finished, wrapped up there. And then as part of, um, you know, uh, taking it down or completing the project, uh, the certificate of completion, we would remove that sign.
Okay. Okay, so let me just, um, and then, um, if, i- is there signage? I know where you're putting it on the Dr. Solomon Fuller Carter Way, it's always mouthful, right? Um, that makes sense, but if they miss it, is there, are you asking for placement of sign, uh, uh, to tell them to turn around at the Peters Farm Way?
We, we were not, we were just looking to as, uh, put a sign at, um, the, um, road as noted, specifically just to identify that as the construction entrance.
Okay. And not to be kind of too picky here, but it's, it's, um, it's not clear to me from the drawings, um, but Kristy, maybe you know, um, like, so there's the stone pillars there?
Yeah, no.
And, okay, so you're going to show us because I'm thinking that if it's inside the stone pillars, which is where my preference would be, um, if you drive by, you know, if you don't see it, you've driven by it. But if you're giving your, uh, trucks the instruction on where to turn, hopefully it's like, oh, this is the right turn.
Absolutely, no, and, and it is, uh, you, somewhat of a unique situation because that wall is there and I apologize, this-
That's okay.
I picked up the wrong one.
Uh, no, you didn't correct, you see the shared screen?
Oh.
Are you sure my using F8?
Yeah, so I'm trying and F8 is not working.
It's okay, you can, I mean, we're-
Can I bring it up and show it or they wouldn't?
We can see it here.
Oh, you did get to see it.
We could see it there, we couldn't see it up on this main screen.
Oh. All right, so if, if-
We just saw his desktop, so, but it's, so his screen was already sharing, so we just needed him to drag, I think-
Yeah.
You might have split screen on, so you might want to drag it over to the second screen.
I only have the one, I don't know how that would, that would work.
That's okay, if he wants to just walk-
There you go.
Oh, there we go.
It's weird, so it's, now it's not on my screen, but it's just showing it, so, um, I'll speak to that.
Yeah.
Maybe just make it bigger if you can, I don't know if you can.
Uh, I've lost it.
Maximize it.
That's okay.
Here we go. I use that.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. Okay.
So, uh, this is the approach, clearly, uh, majority of the traffic comes from Route 9 up Lyman. So, um, in our opinion, because we, we wanted to, you know, we don't want it to be, um, too, you know, it's going to be there, our, our, you know, from our perspective, we don't want it to be glaring or, you know, overt or anything. We want it to be available for the truck drivers to recognize it. So our thought was to put it on, um, if you're the, kind of prior to the entrance road, just behind the, the wall there, uh, and where that pillar is. And we'll locate it probably a little bit, um, towards, uh, Route 9 up Lyman just so that it's, it's visible behind that pillar and so the pillar doesn't block it from the, the truck traffic.
Okay. Makes sense. Last question, is it a two-faced sign, I missed that, is it double-sided?
No, it's not, the, the intent is just to face the traffic coming from Route 9.
From Route 9, okay.
That is the, the large majority, you know, I don't want to say all because that's, wouldn't be fair, but it's the large majority of the construction traffic is coming from, uh, that direction.
Okay.
No questions?
Uh, Ian?
Yeah, just a question, I know, I know that we are putting the dog park, um, in that area. I don't think it goes that close to the entrance, but just want to make sure that doesn't interfere with anything going on with that construction.
We're, we're shaking our head no.
I don't think so, yeah, I think it's pretty far away from there actually. A good 50 yards, I'd say.
It's a different parcel.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, I'm not an expert on it, but it seems like it's further away.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's right. Yep.
Anything else, Ian?
No, that's it.
Sean? No, okay. Uh, so let's see.
So I would, uh, move to approve the installation of the sign as on town property in the location as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
CEO, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Uh, item nine, request to approve the local initiative, uh, program, LIP application for 3 Baylor Avenue.
So Kristy, did you want to introduce this?
Alan, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I can say, so in the packet is the local initiative program application for the property at 3 Baylor Avenue. This is a project of the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, um, who purchased the property from the town, um, almost two years ago now, um, and has, uh, signed a purchase and sale and closed down the property with a nonprofit, um, or developer who is building it as a certified affordable unit. The existing home will be demolished, it is not in livable condition and could not be brought up to code. Um, and so this is the next step. Um, this is part of the developer's effort, um, to, uh, obtain the building permits and get everything in place by the deadline of September 17th. So, and so in the packet, it's not just the purchase and sale and the program application, but the, um, affordable housing restriction, which will be in perpetuity. Um, you'll also know that there's an escrow agreement related to, um, a 2004 oil spill on the property.
Mm-hmm. Could you just describe the house a little bit for those that don't know what it's going to look like? And since you're taking one down.
So the house is going to be a three-bedroom, two-bath home, about 1,400 square foot. Um, it will be, um, slightly narrower than the footprint of the existing house and go a little bit deeper into the yard, so it conforms with the existing non-conformance of the property. Um, and will be sold, um, given current interest rates, um, and the number of bedrooms and the, the 2024 numbers from HUD, um, the property will be marketed for about $240,000. And, and people who, um, are at the 80% AMI level will be qualified or less will be qualified as buyers.
I would just say it's amazing to sort of think about the timeline that this has taken. I feel like we've been, and I don't mean that in a bad way to the, the Affordable Housing Trust that, you know, like, right. So thank you, it's really-
The, the challenge was that, um, there was this oil spill in 2004 and even though it was closed by DEP, um, you know, almost 20 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when DEP closed the file, they neglected to document how deep the remediation went. And so the builder's lender had concerns about residual.
Sure.
So the trust did bring in a licensed site professional to do, but the level one survey, I care about this in other properties we've had. Um, and then that came back clean, the lender was still nervous, so we actually brought them back in and they had to drill core samples through the foundation, through the slab foundation to make sure there was no residual seepage under the building itself. And because the floor has asbestos in it, it's not just a guy with a drill, it's a guy with a drill and a hazmat suit and a cleanup crew.
Yep.
It was a bit of a production. Uh, not to mention getting the drilling equipment into the building.
Yep.
Um, and so it just took a while logistically to make all that happen.
Yeah, no, and, again, just, it's, I think it's important for the public to understand the process that the Affordable Housing Trust has been diligently working toward this along with all of its partners.
Yes.
And it just takes time.
Pushing as fast as we can.
Yep, so, well done.
Other questions, Ian, Sean?
Um, just one. I think later in the packet, there was like, and, and is it an estimate of cost? And it had interest rates and, and P and I and everything? Is that just an estimate, Alan?
That's, that is the, um, that is the financial plan that's required by the executive office of housing livel, and livable communities. So that's the current operating financial plan for the project.
So to sort of prove that clients, that, that it will be affordable and that it's manageable within the income-
Yeah, it's-
It's expected.
Yeah, 240,000, I, I, I think it's 240,080 dollars would be the 80% AMI sale price for a three-bedroom home. Um, and that is, um, that is attainable to give, um, a sense, it's a slight increase over what, um, the max, that sale price was in, for 2023. Um, we, when we did the buy-down on Lawton's Way, that three-bedroom home went for just over 232,000, I believe. And so there was a slight increase. That number will actually change based on interest rates at the time of closing. Because it's really about what the monthly cost is to the homeowner, not exceeding the 30% of that 80, 80% threshold.
Thank you.
And the subsidy that the trust is providing the developer to complete the project scales based on the interest rate and what's needed to guarantee that that sale price is viable.
Uh, so I'll just, uh, make a comment that I really appreciate the efforts of the Affordable Housing Trust. It's been a long process and obviously dealing with the logistics of, that you just described, uh, were probably pretty lengthy, so it's great to see that this has, um, moved forward in this direction. I did have one just kind of thing, uh, as I was going through the documents, I think it was well over 240 pages in our packet, I want to say for this topic. Um, on page 141, I noticed that there was no, uh, of our packet, that is, uh, there was no signature, um, from Ed uh, on the amendment to purchase and sale agreement and land development agreement, and I didn't know if that was-
Those have been fully executed and recorded.
That's what I wanted to know.
The developer just sent their copies in because they're executed in parts.
Yeah.
Um, but I can, actually, if you go to the Affordable Housing Trust website and look under projects for 3 Baylor Avenue, you can see all of these documents as filed with the Worcester County Register of Deeds.
Okay. Terrific.
And, and, uh, Ed Bayne, his chair, will be in tomorrow morning to sign the LIP.
Okay. All right, any other questions, thoughts?
Thank, thank you to the town for supporting the work of the trust.
Yep.
Uh, so I'll look for a motion, I think there is one, I'm just trying to get back up to it. There we go.
So I would move to authorize the select board chair, Patrick Welch, to sign the local initiative program application for 3 Baylor Avenue.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
CEO, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you again, uh, for doing that work, Alan. All right, let's move on to firefighter collective bargaining agreement. Um, I am going to recuse myself from this conversation and ask that, um, Ian, uh, walk us through this, uh, this topic.
Okay, so I'm pleased to announce that the town and the firefighters' union have concluded negotiations for a three-year successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Implementation of the agreement is subject to town meeting funding of the cost items contained in the contract- of the cost items contained in the contract at the upcoming October special town meeting. While the board previously authorized approval of the terms of the agreement in executive session, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly share the highlights of the agreement. The three-year agreement covers the period July first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. That's fiscal years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six. Annual cost of living base wage increases effective July first were agreed to as follow, uh, fif- for fiscal year twenty-four, it's a two percent increase, a two percent increase for fiscal year twenty-five, and a two-point-five percent increase for fiscal year twenty-six. In addition to the above base wage increases, EMT stipends will increase by fifteen hundred dollars over the life of the contract from the current, uh, three thousand dollars to thirty-three hundred in twenty twenty-four, to thirty-seven hundred in fiscal year twenty-five, into forty-five hundred in fiscal year twenty-six. Paramedic stipends will increase by forty-nine hundred dollars over the life of the contract from the current seventy-six hundred to ninety-five hundred in fiscal year twenty-four, ten thousand in fiscal year twenty-five, into twelve thousand five hundred dollars in fiscal year twenty-six. Employees will receive holiday pay for the Juneteenth holiday. The agreement amends the tuition reimbursement language to establish dollar amount caps on tuition reimbursement available to employees and adds language requiring employees who voluntarily resign from employment with the town within two years of receiving reimbursement to pay back the town for any educational reimbursements received during a two-year look-back period. The annual clothing allowance is increased by one hundred dollars in each of the contract years. The current allowance of nine hundred dollars will increase to twelve hundred dollars by the third year of the agreement. Additionally, there were several items that were agreed to that are non-monetary, um, effectively language clean-up in the agreement.
Thank you, Alan, for walking us through that. I'll just quickly say I appreciate the board's work on this, having not been a part of the discussion. So, thank you very much for all the work. And certainly, thank you to the union, uh, for, for coming to the table and having the discussions with the town. And I'll just open it up to the rest of the board if they have any comments or questions they'd like to make. Go ahead, Ian. Ian?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo what you said, Patrick. Also, thank Kristi and Kim for all the work they did. I do think, while it took some time, I think we did come to a kind of fair and equitable contract, both on behalf of the town as well as on behalf of the firefighters' union. So, appreciate all the work folks put in, and I think we're in, in a good place for all.
Terrific. Seeing no other comments, I think we're ready to move on to the next topic. Uh, item eleven, implementation update, senior needs assessment.
Yeah, so, our senior center director is here. Alma Demontis shall come up. Um, but this is similar to the update that you heard from the IT director in July. The, the senior needs assessment report, uh, was completed in May of twenty twenty-three, so a little over a year. Um, and then, the implementation plan was presented to you in the fall, uh, last year. So, this is just an update on that progress.
Terrific. Welcome, Alma.
Hi.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
What's going on? Share it with us.
Thank you for having me. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Westboro Rangers Give Back Cross Country Team. If any of you have kids on that team and you want them to weed something, they are now certified experts because they cleaned up all the islands and the courtyard. They've, they did an amazing job this morning, so, I wanted, I wanted to thank them out loud, so... They did a great job. So...
See, I was going to put your slides up, Alma, just so.
Oh, okay, sorry. I apologize for contributing to your huge packets this week.
Oh, no worries.
I'm not a, I'm not a PowerPoint... I'm not a PowerPoint expert, so I got a little carried away.
No, 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 I, I will say, I, I was noticing in, in my time on the board, just three, I'm just going to stall for some time here. Uh, well, my time on the board for three and a half years, I think this was the largest packet, I think, since I've been on the board, so...
But, don't worry, Alan really drove that, so...
Don't blame me, it's the bureaucracy.
That's right.
It was only nine pages.
No, yours is... One percent, basically.
All right, so, where is this going to, is it going to be up there?
It should be here and there, hopefully.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm distracted by something.
Yay.
All right, great. Fire away.
So, the first thing I want to say is that we looked at, um, what I based this on was all of the year-one, um, priorities that we had set up when we met, um, to put this, the, uh, assessment together. And I can't take my glasses off to see. We looked at a lot of what we already do in response to the survey and use that time to adjust and strengthen the current programs and services and figure out why residents didn't know what we offered and that many of the things that we already did that were talked about in the survey. And so, while we wait for more space, we've been working on some of our programs, activities, um, you know, different initiatives, like the one in front of you right now. And we've, you know, upgraded our website and advertised more and all of that. So, um, one of the things that was part of the goal to support residents' stated desire to age in the community was to, um, advocate and, um, identify and advocate for regulatory or positive policy changes that promote aging in the community. So, about, hmm, four years ago, maybe five years ago, the state went to the CHAMP system. It's sort of like filling out the universal application for college. And then, everybody in the state gets put into one pile, and that's how they, that's how they decide who gets housing. Unfortunately, that's not working for anybody, and I've spoken with our state legislators, and it seems to be a universal request throughout the Commonwealth that they sort of tighten that up, either do it by county. Um, they used, it used to be by community, so you knew Westboro people were going to be in Westboro housing, but it's not that way anymore. So, Senator Moore, um, has, uh, assured me that he, you know, this will be back in the, back in the session, um, this coming year because he hears it, they hear it from all over the state, that that's just not working. Um, unfortunately, when your name comes up and you live in Dorchester and they want you to move to Pepperill, there's some issues there. So, um, they need to address that. And, uh, so hopefully, with legislation, that'll happen maybe next year. We live in hope. Anyway, yep. So, we also, let me flip because I can see mine better than I can see yours, um, identify needs and opportunities to engage and support residents as they age in the community, particularly residents who live alone and/or those at greater risk of social isolation. So, we have maintained an emergency list, um, that we share with, uh, the fire department usually, um, of people that we are aware of. And obviously, we can't know all five thousand people in town, but it's a pretty substantial list. People who would be higher at risk, um, in the event of, you know, a three-day snowstorm or a hurricane or whatever the situation is. And we keep that list up to date. People who are insulin-dependent diabetics, people who are on oxygen, who require, um, you know, air conditioning or, uh, refrigeration for their medical supplies or whatever. And when we know that there's something coming, um, we take the list, split it up in the office, and we make a lot of phone calls ahead of time. And sometimes, people are like, no, I'm fine, but at least you know I'm out here. And we hear that a lot, so we try to do that. The also, the other thing we also have been doing more of this past year is promoting, um, the Code Red, um, program that the fire department runs, which is like the go-to for emergencies in town. The Safety Net Program, uh, which is the bracelet for, um, dementia patients wandering or kids, you know, whoever, I think we have one on a child and I think we have two of them on seniors right now. Uh, the residential lock boxes, which we've been, we stole that program from Sudbury, but we've been doing it for a very long time. And it's a little box that goes on the front of your house. There's a key in there. Because what I've told people is that if you call 911 and you can't answer the door, they're coming in one way or another, it's much nicer to do it with a key, so... And also, the smoke and, um, CO detector batteries. We did about a hundred houses last fall. And part of that is funded, it's the Senior Safe Grant, Pat? Through the Senior Safe Grant from the Fire Marshal's Office. And then, we've paid for some, so they replace the batteries. Or if the, if the detectors are more than ten years old, we also help to replace the detectors. We'll do it, but a lot of people buy them and we put them up, so, and we work with the fire department to do that. And, um, it's, it's, like I said, there was a fire a year or so ago and there were no working smoke detectors in the house, not for lack of trying, but, um, so I'd rather that never happen again. Increased knowledge of and participation in existing tax relief programs. I have to say that, um, in meeting with a lot of my colleagues around the state, Westboro, and I'm very proud to say this, has always offered the most, um, all of, the most amount of money we can, you know, give people or, or, um, take off their taxes. The Senior, um, Property Tax Work Program, this is the twentieth year we've been doing it, which I didn't realize that till I went back and looked, and, yikes. We have sixty slots, which is substantially more than most other communities have. I know the town I live in, I think they have thirty. And, um, we regularly fill all those slots. And we always, always have offered the most amount of money that, um, can be offered through that program. And that comes through, um, Mass General Law. They make up those rules. We, I think, we probably do more if we could, but they don't allow us to. The other thing is that I schedule yearly, um, talks with, uh, our chief assessor to come up to the senior center to talk about, in Octo- he's coming, uh, end of October sometime. I can't remember the date. And he talks about all the different programs that are available, and we put some of that in the newsletter as space allows. So, we try very hard to get the word out to people. I think that we have also, um, been able to, within the last couple of years especially, let people know that these programs are available to them and they should take, like, I don't like hearing, well, somebody else needs it more than I do. Hmm, no, not right now, you need it a lot, so go in and apply. And then, we also work with the assessor's office and the treasurer's office when there is someone who, um, is delinquent in their taxes, the town really doesn't want to own your house. We try to find, um, some financial solutions through other community organizations in town, like the Kirkside Foundation are in your shoes. Um, and also, the T, the Senior Tax, the Tax Relief Fund through the town. We've used that a couple of times to sort of help people out and get them back on the road to where they need to be, so that they're not living in their cars. Transportation. Transportation has been an issue for all of the years I've ever worked for this town. We, um, the Council on Aging worked this spring to look at local resources, what was available, Uber, Lyft, Via, all the different, you know, the trains, the buses, the whole, everything. And they, um, came up with some great information, and they will be issuing, um, what they're going to do is put together a resource guide that can be put up on the website, and we're hoping to get that done by the end of next month. And then, updated as needed, like, we're not going to go to the printer and have five thousand copies of it printed because chances are by the time we get that done, half of it'll be, Shelby, Shelby knows what I'm talking about, half of it'll be obsolete. So, something that we can print quickly and pass out, um, so they're, they're working on that. We work on our mini bus service all the time. It's busy every day. Uh, we have two buses on the road just about every day. Fridays in the summer, not so much because we're only there for, for part of the day, but, um, and the, the, the kinds of rides we're providing for people, um, it's not just for seniors. We also have several, um, non-elderly handicap people that take the bus to go to work. Um, we have several wheelchair, um, folks who have to take the bus when we, they go to Worcester. I don't know if you've ever put a price tag on a wheelchair van to go to Worcester, but it's disturbingly expensive. So, we make a lot of trips up. We're fortunate that both UMass and St. Vincent's have, um, buildings at Northborough Crossing, so a lot of times we only have to go that far, which is good. But we, we do take some folks up to Worcester, and we'll continue to do that. I have talked with, um, a member of the, um, Disability Committee. I can't think of his name. I'm, I'm, I'm losing my mind when it comes to names these days. Um, we've talked about how we can better serve that community, um, and, uh, they, you know, they're very open to that. The other issue that we had that comes up a lot is the issue of liability insurance for volunteers working on behalf of the senior center. We've lost several former and potential new volunteers who don't want to be put in jeopardy for driving a senior to a medical appointment. And that's, I, I don't know how to solve that problem. That's been a problem for a very long time, but I do know that probably thirty-some years ago, there was such a thing. So, it, it is, it's a possibility, but I guess not anymore. Okay, expand support for family and unpaid caregivers, providing, um, care and assistance. We currently sponsor a monthly Memory Cafe, and we also have a Saturday respite program for three hours. The, um, we usually have, we usually have a full house for the Memory Cafe. It's on Thursday afternoons. And then, the Saturday program, um, attendance has picked up significantly in the last few weeks. We would love to expand both of those programs, we really would. That was something that came right smack out of the survey, and also, the in-home volunteer respite program that's still kind of pending. Our caregiver support group meets twice a month, and we have had, we usually have between ten and fifteen people. It's open to whoever, um, we have been advertising that more. And then, we've set up two programs, um, for October and November through AARP, for adult children who, um, are, are, or are soon to become caregivers. Um, one of them is called Prepare to, Prepare to Care is the first one. And the second one is Finances in Caregiving and How to Talk to Mom and Dad About Their Money because most mom and dads don't like to talk to their kids about their money, but if you're going to take over full-time caregiving, um, you kind of need to know those things. And we're also, we've been working on, um, a local caregiver guide that we can distribute to new people that come in. Um, I'm hoping to have that done maybe by, hmm, maybe by the beginning of October. So, with the purchase of fifteen hundred Union Street, all bets were off as far as, like, we were kind of in a holding pattern. But we are anticipating and thinking about what we'd like to do with bigger spaces and sharing space with recreation for fitness and exercise classes as well as other things that we intend, anticipate doing. Um, you know, hoping that things go well in October and that we can plan to get that done. We will, um, continue to utilize the space we have at the senior center now to the best of our abilities and, um, that we can fit into the space and that we can afford and, um, have staff and can find instructors. And then, expanded social recreational lifelong learning opportunities. We actually, um, this summer, we did a couple, um, trips. I call them mini-trips because we took our, our twenty-passenger bus. But we did, we went to a couple of historic, um, places in the area. Last week, they went to the Butterfly Place up in Bolton. Is that where it is? But we're adding, we have added some new one-time programs. We also have added some new weekly things. We're looking, once, um, the public health nurse gets on board with us on a regular schedule in September, um, he's looking at doing maybe either, probably a diabetes, um, support group because we have a lot more diabetics than we knew we did. And, um, we've talked with our regular participants and, um, we've pulled some suggestions from the surveys for different programs. A lot of them we did already, so it was kind of, I mean, it wasn't something new. But we've tried to increase the frequency of the classes and made arrangements for others when an instructor can be found, so... And then, um, communication, enhancing communications. We, um, the senior scene is distributed through over fifty outlets in town, and we have two hundred people that get the subscription. Uh, it's also available on the town's website. It's also available on the printer's website. We're looking at, um, probably, well, maybe at least by the time we move into the new building, um, increasing the number of pages in the, um, in the newsletter. And, um, we also, our, um, town website has been updated. Stephanie and Kristen in my office did a great job. And Tammy worked with Owen to put, um, we had a separate Facebook, a separate website, webpage for our Asian outreach group. And, um, Tammy worked with Owen to migrate that to, um, the regular town website, so you can access that from there now. One of the things that we really want to do is redo our Westboro TV, um, monthly program. But unfortunately, I haven't found anybody brave enough to... but unfortunately I haven't found anybody brave enough to sit in front of the camera and do it. Bill and Carol LaPrada used to do it and they did a great job, but nobody wants to volunteer for that job. I don't know why, so. We've also worked to enhance the My Senior Center, the capabilities of that are amazing and they add new things all the time. We now have over 1,400 people that are registered through that program and we can keep track of volunteer hours that way. And also the bus drivers have portable clickers, so we can keep better track of our bus statistics too that way, plus all the people that come into the building. And they're all very well-trained, they need to scan their little tag before they get started. Tonight they're square dancing, so, anyway. So that's, I mean, we're, it's, it's a work, it's a, yeah. It's a work in progress, we're not going to stop. We will be looking at, I mean, once we, once we know what's happening with the building and if we can start a couple new classes, if recreation's going to move in sooner, I mean, it, so it's all kind of, it's all kind of fluid at this point, so, but we're getting there.
Well, thank you for sharing an update. I'll open up to the board for any questions or comments.
No, appreciate the information. It's good to see so much work is happening to continue the programs, to continue the effort as well as, as well as expand based on the feedback from the community.
Yeah, or these guys can go, whatever.
Ian, Sean?
Just wanted to say thank you very much, Alma.
You're welcome.
Yeah, same here. Nothing, nothing bad, it's just good to see progress being made and look forward to continue progress.
Okay, I guess I'm the outlier here, so I have some questions, but before I do that, thank you, Alma, really appreciate it. I think it's really important to recognize the work that's being done and to sort of come here and, and, you know, sort of, I would say, reach it to a broader audience than maybe you typically are reaching out to, so thank you very much. This is great. One suggestion, you've probably already thought of it, I know that on the senior center website as well as Council on Aging, there is a link to the senior needs assessment. I think this slide presentation would be great to go there as an update.
Okay.
So that would be one suggestion I would make. I, I do have a, kind of a handful of questions and if, I'm not expecting you to know these right here, but if through Christie and Sheila, Kim, whomever, you could follow up just so the board is made aware, or maybe even, maybe Christie, you could provide an update in a town manager report after, like, with some of these versus bringing Alma back. So anyway, I'll just jump in here. So regarding the, the transportation, so a couple of questions. So the mini bus or van, like, we, we purchased a new one, correct? So my understanding is that does not have, am I incorrect, does not have a lift?
That is absolutely incorrect. All three of our vehicles are lift-equipped.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Setting the record straight, right here.
I could answer that one.
Thank you. No, that's, thank you, okay.
No, I mean, honestly, it doesn't make any sense not to do that. It's not that much more expensive than
Okay.
An unequipped vehicle.
Yep.
And we transport a lot, we have scooters and we have wheelchairs, so.
It sounded odd to me and I hadn't seen it, so that was your, all right, excellent. All of them are wheelchair or scooter or something equipped, great.
Mm-hmm.
On the liability for seniors transporting other people, like, I understand that concern, not just in the car, but helping them in another car, is there not a Good Samaritan policy that kind of covers someone for that? Do we know?
Yeah, it's a, the question has come up, it's in terms of whether the town's insurance, similar to if a volunteer were driving a town vehicle.
Yep.
There's, the liability stays with the vehicle.
Yep.
But that doesn't work when they're using their own vehicle. Our insurance will not cover in the event that someone is driving their own vehicle. So we've had a lot of discussion about this and this is the way it has been, so it's, there hasn't been a change in coverage or the practice.
Yep.
So I think some of it is communicating and making sure if people are willing to volunteer that they do understand that. But typically their insurance becomes primary when they're engaging in these activities. They're a volunteer, they're not an employee. Similarly, employees driving their own vehicles.
Sure, sure. And having never volunteered for that, do we verify that the drivers have insurance and registered, the car's registered in their name and all that?
Yeah, we take care of that and also do a query.
Okay. Yeah, it would be great if we could find a solution to that, but that's a tough one. It, it just is. It would, so where a lot of these questions are coming from, and just for framework, I'm just, I'm going to step back from the questions themselves, so I think you've given a lot of really good qualitative information here.
Mm-hmm.
I would love to see a little more quantitative information, kind of in the next update or in kind of the, whenever, however frequently we, we or the town gets updates. For example, how many drivers do, my mind goes to, how many drivers do we have doing individual transportation for seniors? And if those folks just evaporated, right, and said, "I'm not going to do this anymore," what stress would that put on, you know, the vans, right? So what would that ridership need to increase? Because if we're going to squeeze the balloon from one end, right, it's, there's going to be an impact on the other.
I mean, we, we did pick some of that up during COVID
Yeah.
Because people still needed to go and we didn't have volunteers at that point, but it was minimal because they were, I mean, they weren't, people weren't going to doctors, they weren't going into facilities, so.
Sure.
But we did, you know, we did some of that then and it wasn't a problem, but I, I mean, now we do. I mean, I can certainly have the, get the statistics and send them to you tomorrow.
Yeah, no, and, and I don't, I, I'm not asking for them right now, but I just, I think it's important, there's, again, there's a lot of, again, I'm just going to use my own word, qualitative, but there's, there are, I think we kind of need to be a little more quantitative in kind of measuring progress and improvement or areas that we need to focus on. So that, that sort of underlies all of these. My other question is, moving to the caregiver component and supporting caregivers, you mentioned the volunteer in-home respite program is still pending. Can you tell a little bit more about why is it still pending? Is, are there challenges there? What, 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 why is it pending?
I think, Kim can answer that better than me.
Okay.
The volunteer, my understanding is you were working to get volunteers and develop.
I have four volunteers ready to go right now. I've been waiting for approval for the job descriptions, the program descriptions and the legal release for the families.
Okay, okay. And so that's to town council and all of that has to be reviewed? Okay, okay. And this is a year one goal, so we have a little bit more time, but, okay, okay. All right, so we'll kind of just, that's an action, I'm, I guess. Let's see here. So on the communication aspect, so let me, on the goal of providing expanded social recreational lifelong learning opportunities, again, this is, I think, a good example of, you, you say the senior center's added several new one-time and weekly groups, et cetera. Okay, great. It would be helpful to know what are those, what's the attendance, what's the feedback? I wasn't expecting that here, but going forward, I think that that's kind of just important for people to kind of understand. Was it one program? Was it 10? Kind of the general gist, and if you have any to share, I'd love to hear.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, we've done, we've done painting, we've done flower arranging, we've done, we've started bridge. The Rummy Cube is disturbingly popular.
Yes.
It's way too complicated for me, but they love it.
Yep.
That's great.
Scrabble, the cribbage players, I mean, they do all, all of that and they usually get a pretty good crowd.
Yep.
Bridge hasn't been so good the last couple of weeks, I think it's just because people are away.
Yes, I'm.
But it'll pick up again in the fall.
Okay, all right, good, good. Thank you for those examples. Okay, and then just moving to communications, which was the last component, so what, there's always a cost to printing, so one of the things, I know we talked about it length because I was on the senior needs assessment implementation committee, we talked about increasing the distribution in the community. So where does that stand?
So I've spoken with our publisher, I was thinking or hoping that they also did mailing and they do not, so we would have to hire a private mailing concern and I had spoken with the gentleman that does Debbie's mailing for whatever it is, she mails out ballots and all of that. He was not very forthcoming, you know, he told me that just to get it, to get the lists all ready and blah, 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 it would probably cost, depending upon how many we ended up sending out, somewhere between 15 and $2,000, which.
Per, per mailing?
Yeah, because we talked about just doing one. It also depends on the weight of the newsletter, so if we add pages, I mean, there's so many variables to all of that.
Sure, okay.
So.
So, you know, I think it would be, I mean, as much as I'm all for pushing the website and that's great, I have a comment about that, I do think, you know, I, you know, the tactile, the tactile element of it is, and so, you know, I mean, I sat in those meetings and I'm like, if we need, if we need money for this, this is, this is a direct way to reach our seniors. I think this is a really good investment of taxpayer dollars to kind of get the word out and not, we just can't rely on digital funding. So I, I would like to see a little more kind of movement there so that we can, you know, and that's just me, just one person speaking here. So that we can get the word out. And obviously there's, you mentioned increasing the pages, that adds to weight, but those sort of all tie together, so.
I mean, right now, we, with the pages we've got, we can put a first-class stamp on it and that takes it.
Right.
But if we add more pages, that's going to change.
Sure, sure, okay. Are there any, well, that's fine. Okay, so on the website, have, have you considered, since we have a new website, when did we launch it, Christie?
November.
November, thank you. So right after the senior, after the implementation plan was launched, have you done any targeted, like, come learn about the website and how the information about the senior center and how to navigate the, the website? Have you offered any, have you considered offering those?
No, but that's a good idea.
Okay, okay.
I hadn't thought about that.
And I, and this actually stems from actually a conversation I had just recently with several, they happened to be seniors, and they were like, "How would I get alerts as to what's going on in town?" Right? Like, "I know we've got this new website," and so there's a, "How do I page?" Right? You know, but, you know, if folks aren't comfortable, so I really think walking them through, I, you know, and then people can teach other people, like, it's easy to do, so that, that might be something.
We also have a new volunteer that's coming in starting in September. He's a former IT guy and he's going to do a couple weeks, a couple days every month working sort of, so the kids from Alphabet Valley come in once a month during the school year and they kind of get people's cell phones back operating and, you know.
I'll send my mom. Mom, if you're listening, you're going to come to Westboro.
They push all the buttons and then they don't know why it doesn't work. Same thing with the clickers.
Right, right.
But, but this gentleman is going to be able to go a little deeper into what needs to be done and he's a very, very nice man. And I think that we're seeing, like, it's a, we still, we have that group of people that are computer literate or semi-literate and then we have those people who are never going to, like, I don't, you know, I don't want nothing to do with that, so.
Sure, sure.
So we kind of have to be a little tuned into both areas.
Yeah, no, I, no, you have, good.
But, no, but I will talk to him about making sure that one of the things they do is to, you know. The other thing is too, that when, we also have the ability through the My Senior Center program to put out phone calls. You might have seen, if you looked, read the newsletters that I send you every month, there's a, there was a phone number and it said, "Don't call this number back, but if we send you a message saying this class has been canceled or the senior center's closed today because it's snowing or whatever the situation is, that's what the number's going to come up on your caller ID. So don't think that it's, you know, spam call or whatever. Listen to your message." And we've used that quite a few times.
Yeah, good. Well, and I think with all things, you know, it's multiple iterations of, in different ways and communicating the same thing.
And I know that when, I'm going to use your name in vain again.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I know when Pat was at the senior center a couple of weeks ago for the cookout with the fire department, that he talked a lot about code red and that was the way to really get information out. And we, you know, he knows if he needs us to do, like, to reiterate
Sure.
That we can do that actually really quickly.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, it might be interesting, I know students are always looking for projects, maybe they could help with some tutorial or video things if you collaborate with the high school and I'm sure they could probably whip one up for you guys and, and then, then it could be available, so like, this is how.
Yeah, we have four, we have four kids up, we've had four, yeah.
I don't know.
Four students all summer that have been coming in every Tuesday night
Sure.
To serve and clean up and they're adorable.
Yeah, no, no, that's great. I just, it might be something that is sustainable that you can say, "Oh, we have this video."
Yep.
Like, so that, that might be. And then finally, and thank you for your patience, Mr. Chair, I would just extend an offer as I have before, I'm happy to set aside once a month, once a quarter, for any updates on the 01581 to get the word out about key upcoming events or what have you, and I've jotted some down, so I'll follow up with you, but I'm happy to, and I can do it, if no one wants to be on the show, you can give me the script. But I think it's, you know, communicate, we can't communicate enough, so.
I told Karen Henderson that before I retired, I'd do a one-on-one interview with her.
Okay.
And now I'm afraid she's going to, like, collect on that soon, so I'm kind of.
Oh, she will. Karen doesn't forget.
I'm kind of nervous.
All right, thank you, Alma, very much.
You're very welcome.
Good presentation.
Elvis will be in the building next Tuesday night, we're having pulled pork and, because we didn't think that bananas and peanut butter were very, I don't know.
They're actually quite good.
I know, well, that's what people, it's like, I like bananas, it's like, I know.
Add a little bacon to yours.
It was Elvis's favorite sandwich, but anyway, we're doing pulled pork and coleslaw, so if you'd like to come next Tuesday night, come on up and it's our last, last Tuesday for the summer, so.
Well, thank you for all that, you and the whole team, that, what you do there, I, it's, I know summer's a busy time for you, as, it's always busy, but it's an important place.
Yeah, I have amazing people that work up there right now.
And I would just encourage you, just my final comment is, how do we reach more seniors in our community? So I know we talked about the mailing, but how do we reach the people that aren't using the senior center that think, "That's not the place for me." It's, it's just, I'm going to let that question float out there, but outreach to those communities, like, hand-to-hand, not combat, but hand-to-hand outreach, I think would be probably welcome and, and a way to reach people.
It's the $64,000 question for every senior center director in the state
But you can solve.
Or the country. Yeah, well, maybe I could, but.
Or your team, you know, it's a great project for someone.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there are some people who are, A, never going to see themselves as old
Yeah.
Which is fine. And there are some people that just, you know, unfortunately, senior centers and Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals still have that, you know, it's for poor people kind of thing. I mean, there's so many, so much of that
I, I get it.
Floating around out there.
I get it, but it's how you, it's, yes, and I would say, and it's how you sell it too, right? I mean, like, thinking about having a lockbox on your house where someone could get access to a key sounds scary, but then when you explain it to someone and you say how, you know, and, and I've had this conversation with our police chief of like, "How does it work?" Because we put one on our home.
Yep.
I was like, "Oh my God, like, how, how do we not know about this five years ago?" So it's, it's all in the presentation.
There's probably close to 300 of those out there right now.
Yep.
So there's a lot. I mean, I think that people, it's funny because we, there's a lot of durable medical equipment that goes in and out of that building every single day and it's funny because some people have come in to pick that up, they grab a newsletter and then next thing you know, they've signed up to come to something.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, it's, I think it's baby steps.
I want big steps.
I know, I do too, but, you know.
All right.
I'll take what I can get, so.
Thanks.
All right.
I'll say, Shelby, I always appreciate all your questions. You asked all of my questions, so I had to come up with a new question, so you're always so thorough and, and I really appreciate all of those questions. And Alma, I certainly appreciate all the work you and your team are doing and, and there's certainly a lot of additional opportunity as we move forward, certainly communication and getting more seniors involved, making the senior center cool is, I think, you know, the way I think of it, it's going to be like the hit place to go.
We're trying.
Yeah, I know, I know you are. So my only question is, I also sit on the master plan implementation committee
Yep.
Which is a mouthful. There's a number of items in our master plan that are related to many of the topics you discussed tonight.
Yep.
Am I, is it safe to assume that you're going to be providing an input into the update that is expected into the master plan committee in the coming weeks? The committee is actually going to review the activity that's happened over the last year, just reset on the priorities coming out of the master plan committee of the 200-plus action items. Only a few are senior-related.
No, no, and I did put some information on there that I had.
Just want to make sure that
They were hard to find.
Because, because your, your, the things you talked about tonight are, are, are very relevant to the master plan, so I want to make sure that that information's captured, so just to point out there.
All right, I'll, I'll go back and check tomorrow, but like I said, I did put some information on there for the ones I could find.
Okay, terrific.
It's pretty lengthy.
Oh, yeah.
Scroll and scroll and scroll.
It is, it is a big document. So, um, thank you. Thank you for doing that. And, uh, again, appreciate you coming tonight and sharing with us the work and, uh, let us know if there's anything that we can do to help you be successful in your, in your department.
Appreciate all of your support. I don't know if Kristy's told you, I'll tell you, that, um, I've submitted my letter to the town. I'm retiring at the end of the year, so.
And how many years does that mean then?
Uh, October 17th, that'll be 41.
Well, fantastic. We really appreciate all those years of service, so.
Ninety-nine percent of it I loved.
Well, that's, that's better than most jobs, so congratulations.
Ninety-eight, but, uh, it, it has truly been an honor and a privilege. I've seen this town go from, you know, we had two rooms at the community house to 10,000 square feet at the top of the hill. And, um, it's definitely, um, it, it's been a challenge. It's been wonderful. It's been frustrating. It's been all of those things. And, um, I will miss people. I will not miss getting up at six o'clock in the morning when it's 27 degrees outside. You know, it's, it's just, um, it doesn't seem, I don't, I have no, no, um, like, like, what is 40 years? I don't know what that means, but.
Well, thank you and we got to have you back before you go.
I'll, I'll, I'll be around.
All right. And like I said, you all can come visit me too.
Oh, yeah.
We are planning on it, right? We've got the new schedule.
We're all meeting the criteria here pretty soon.
I don't check IDs at the door.
No, I know, I know you don't. I always fill out this, the My Senior Center, so.
55 and plus, I'm already there, so.
That's right.
Okay, we'll take it. All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alma.
All right, moving on to item 12, um, Hazard Mitigation Plan Presentation, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission and the Fire Chief. Uh, welcome, Chief Purcell.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Patrick Purcell, serving as your Fire Chief and tonight also serving as your Emergency Management Director. So included in your packet for this week was a draft of a hazard mitigation plan. And if you're wondering what a, and for the viewers, what a hazard mitigation plan is, it is a long-term strategic plan where we identify, uh, vulnerable places in our community that are vulnerable particularly to natural disasters. And, uh, the plan will highlight what those locations are and maybe some of, uh, the resolve for that. And, uh, long-term beyond tonight and the next meeting, uh, at the next meeting, you would actually vote, uh, perhaps to accept this plan. Uh, you could see this in the future coming up on a capital plan, some of the infrastructure needs that we've identified that, that possibly exist. So to highlight just the process before CMRPC comes up, uh, we maintain through the Emergency Management Department, uh, an array of plans inclusive of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Uh, we have an outside, uh, person that does, uh, two dam, dam plans for the community. We have a hazardous materials plan, uh, a continuity of operations plan for the town should, uh, we get shut down like we used, uh, during COVID, uh, when we weren't aware of what the outcomes would be of, uh, of the global pandemic. And we also have the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is, uh, currently, uh, expired. Uh, when we identified that that expiration date would be approaching, uh, the town manager and I collectively wrote a, uh, grant to, uh, MEMA or the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for approximately $25,000 to hire a consultant to help us, uh, to formulate the plan. Uh, through the procurement process, we identified that, uh, CMRPC or Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, uh, would be the, uh, the contracted vendor. We secured a contract with them. We enlisted, uh, internal stakeholders through most of the departments here in town. Uh, we each equally shared responsibility, uh, developing that plan, uh, which have, which have had and, uh, hopefully had, I know it was long, had some time to review. And, uh, brings us up to tonight. Uh, part of the process for the plan is to publicly present it. You do not need to vote on this tonight, but you're encouraged to certainly ask questions. Uh, we can make amendments in the next, uh, week or so, or a week or two before your next meeting. And then if you're, uh, an approval of that at the next meeting, you would be voting to, to accept that plan. Really, I just, I wanted to thank the department heads that showed up. It was a long process over a two-year period. Uh, there's a lot of hours that, that went into it. I wanted to thank CMRPC for their hard work because they really are the ones that, uh, generated the report off of the information they got about our community. And then most importantly, and it's not only your department heads that contributed to this, we also solicited, uh, public opinion through, uh, surveys that were done uh, in hand for people that, uh, didn't have access to electronic devices as well as through, uh, social media and other, uh, electronic platforms. So I just wanted to thank the community for the ones that participated and, uh, contributed to the plan. And if you don't have questions for me, that's really all I have to say. I'll have CMRPC come up and, uh, they can present the, the draft to you tonight.
So I'm just looking at the rest of the board to see if there's any questions for the chief.
I just, I'm going to hear first.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, chief.
Will, you're up.
Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Andrew Lowe. I am the Director of Community Development and Resiliency Planning at CMRPC. With my colleague, Will Talbot, who's getting the computer ready here. So, uh, CMRPC, for folks who don't know, is the state-designated regional planning agency for Westboro and 39 other communities in Southern Worcester County. Uh, as Chief Purcell mentioned, we've been working closely with him and, uh, a team of, of other, uh, town officials and town staff for a little bit over a year under this grant from MEMA to do the town's, uh, updated hazard mitigation plan. So as the chief mentioned, the prior plan is expired. It was done in 2017, also by CMRPC. So tonight, we're here to really just present an overview of the draft plan update and answer questions either from the board or from the public. Uh, and for folks who are in the room, we do have a sign-in sheet and a handout that, uh, may be of interest.
If you need more space, I think there's actually some pullouts on the side.
Are there?
More space there.
We can make do here.
All right.
All right. Um, so why is Westboro doing this, doing this plan? It's really two main reasons. So the first one is completing the plan is an important activity in and of itself, making sure that the town and its partners are keeping up with, uh, up to date with natural hazard risks and how they're changing and how they affect Westboro. Uh, secondly, having an up-to-date FEMA-approved plan allows the town to seek a variety of FEMA hazard mitigation grants. All right. Um, so the plan is really about planning for actions that can be taken before the natural hazards that you see listed here. Um, so as most people are aware, the town is subject to hazards ranging from blizzards to wildfires to stormwater runoff. As anybody knows who's tried to drive under the commuter rail tracks at Main Street after it's rained heavily, uh, you know, the, the town does have some areas where, where stormwater can be of concern. So what is hazard mitigation? Again, it's really about finding actions that can be taken now and in the future to reduce risks from future natural hazards. And I won't get into the details of this part, but, uh, there are studies out there that show that for every dollar you spend on hazard mitigation, you can save anywhere from $4 to $7 in disaster response. So it's really, you know, to put it the most simply, it's, hazard mitigation is about breaking this cycle of disaster and response and recovery and then more disasters. So with that, I'll hand things over to Will, who will get into more detail about the, the planning process as well as the local risk analysis and mitigation strategies that the team has put together. I'm going to drive the slides for you.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. Um, so for the mitigation strategies, um, for the hazard mitigation plan, um, there are four main tools and techniques that these strategies, um, uh, fall under. Uh, next slide. The first type is structure and infrastructure projects. So these are any, uh, types of strategies that relate with making sure that the built environment is, uh, more resilient to natural hazards. The next, uh, type of strategy are preparedness and response strategies. These can relate, uh, to the National Flood Insurance Program compliance in town. They can relate to evacuation planning as well as coordination between different, uh, departments in town. The next type of strategy is education and awareness strategies. These can relate to, um, public outreach that the town provides, um, either through, at community events, at, uh, different, uh, public, uh, publicly accessible buildings in town, uh, through mailings to town residents and through, um, the town website. Uh, and then the final type of strategy is local planning and regulatory strategies. These can, um, include a variety of different, uh, plans and regulations that fall under the planning department, um, or several other different town departments. Um, some include flood plan regulations, um, wetlands bylaws, um, and, uh, master plans and municipal vulnerability preparedness plans. So just very briefly about the planning process, as Chief Purcell already described, um, CMRPC is providing technical assistance to the town um, for plan of, for, plan development. Um, the town is coordinating through, uh, uh, the local hazard mitigation planning team. There was a public survey that was open from January 3rd, uh, through April 2nd of this year. There was also, uh, tonight's public presentation. And then the, um, plan will be submitted, um, uh, to MEMA, um, uh, this fall or shortly after this presentation um, in the next few weeks and then, uh, into FEMA, uh, for their review, revision and approval. And, um, the plan can be adopted by the select board, uh, uh, once FEMA gives tentative approval. Um, so CMRPC, uh, has been assisting, uh, Westboro's Hazard Mitigation Planning Team to identify and map critical facilities in town as well as locally identified hazard areas, um, to, uh, identify, review and then prioritize mitigation strategies, um, as well as review the existing, uh, mitigation measures that the town has. And then, um, through the survey and tonight's presentation and the upcoming public comment period, gathering feedback and input from the public. Um, critical facilities, uh, identified through this planning process include emergency response facilities. So these include the fire station, police station, communications and DPW facilities, emergency shelters as well as primary evacuation routes. We also identified water and sewer facilities, um, the town facilities such as, uh, this building, the town hall and the library and, um, utilities. And then, uh, dams which are of critical importance, um, in terms of natural hazards. And then we also identified facilities, uh, with populations to protect where these populations either live or spend a lot of time. So these include housing authority properties, apartment complexes for seniors and people with disabilities, uh, schools and daycares and then historic buildings and sites. Um, so for the hazards identified in this planning process, we use state and federal data, including the, um, Resilient Mass Plan, which is the state's hazard mitigation plan. And, um, we also used, um, local, uh, local knowledge from the local planning team to supplement that. Um, some examples of data that we used in this planning process include, uh, earthquakes data from Boston College as well as, um, hurricane and snow disaster data from FEMA. So this is just, um, a selection of the different, um, uh, locally identified hazard areas, um, that we identified through this planning process. This isn't exhaustive, but it, it, it's a list of many of them. Um, some particular ones that, um, the planning team thought were really important were several flooding areas around town, especially those near Sandra Pond, Lake Chauncey and the Nichols Reservoir. And then as well, um, uh, utrification in Algo, Algo Blooms at Lake Chauncey. Uh, the public survey, uh, for this plan, as I said, was opened between January and April. It received almost 270 responses and the hazards of greatest concern to, uh, respondents to the survey were winter storms, uh, thunderstorms and flooding. And the survey results inspired several new mitigation strategies that were included in the plan. Um, and then, uh, the survey was promoted, um, through multiple avenues, including, uh, the town website and the community advocate and town Facebook pages. And then, um, the survey was available, um, paper copies at, uh, several publicly accessible buildings in town with high traffic. So the existing mitigation measures that the town, um, has right now includes a wide variety of, of, of different measures. Um, some of them deal with certain hazards such as flooding or winter hazards or wind-related hazards or wildfires, while others, uh, uh, help mitigate, uh, multiple hazard impacts. And so when we look at the, um, mitigation strategies for this plan update, we're looking at what are the gaps in what the town already does to mitigate natural hazards and then what actions can further reduce the town's vulnerability to them? And, um, what we, um, come up with based on those questions can give us, you know, what our priorities are, uh, for this new plan. So, um, this is a select group. It isn't exhaustive. There are many other high priority mitigation measures in the plan, but some of them include drainage improvements in the area near, um, Sandra Pond, um, completing the development of a recently purchased property in town to act as a community center and making sure this community, community center has an emergency generator and, um, can be a shelter. Um, and then, uh, coordinating with other water systems in nearby towns to make sure that there's a backup water supply for the towns, uh, through the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. Um, expanding the redundancy of public safety and emergency services in town, um, by, um, adding these services into different locations in town. Um, and completing and implementing a town-wide language access plan and making hazard mitigation planning materials um, available in languages other than English. So, um, the draft plan, as, um, we described earlier, will be reviewed by MEMA and then FEMA will also review the plan and will issue, uh, conditional approval. A select board resolution to adopt the plan can occur after FEMA conditional approval. And we can be there to talk about the plan at this time, uh, again. Um, and then FEMA will issue final plan approval and the plan will be in effect for five years. Uh, so it'll need to be updated in 2029. So some recommendations, uh, for implementing the plan include establishing a local implementation group whose first task is to prepare a timeline for implementation. Um, the town should integrate the plan's recommendations with local plans and policies. And with a completed plan, the town will be eligible to seek FEMA and other funding sources for plan mitigation measures. Um, the town should also consider other more local resolutions to mitigation strategies. And it is recommended that, that the town meet at least yearly to review the progress on plan implementation. Um, and then the town should update the plan every five years. So thank you so much, uh, for being here for this presentation tonight. Um, the full draft plan will be available shortly on the, uh, Westboro Town website. Um, and we are opening a public comment period on the plan before we submit it to MEMA. And, uh, please send any comments or questions about the plan, uh, to my email, wtalbot@cmrpc.org within, uh, two weeks of the draft plan being posted on the town website and they'll be considered, uh, as we continue to finalize the plan. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the presentation and all the work that you've all done to get to where we are. So it's a tremendous body of work. I'll open up to the board and see if they have any comments or questions. Sean, Ian, anything?
There's a lot there.
There's a lot there.
Lot of information.
Yeah.
And, you know, once it's posted, if members of the community want to look, it also points out the potential for hazards that we might think, gee, that's never happened here before or in a way that's impacted us, but could happen in the future. And again, this is about minimizing the damage that happens or minimizing the impact when it does happen. Um, and so it's the best method for planning the future.
Yes, so I, I guess I had a, because there is a lot of information, so thank you for taking the plan and making it visual, uh, in the presentation. So, um, as you probably heard from the prior presenter, I think having the presentation along with the plan would be helpful to post both of those. Kristy, where would those live? Would they be in?
I don't know where that you, where have you posted information already on the website about the hazard mitigation plan?
Is it under fire or is it generally?
The draft is going to get posted after this meeting, when the comment period is open? Is that what that question is?
So it'll be on town news, but then it would also be on, uh, the fire department website?
Sure, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, so my question then is, this is requesting a two-week comment period, which I know is sort of standard in the realm of co- comment periods, but this board doesn't meet again, um, for a couple of weeks, right? I don't know when our next meeting.
Yeah, two weeks, so ten.
So, but the comment period would be closed at that point, right? And we'd be asking, we'd be asked to approve it at that point. So we don't meet for three weeks, but the comment period closes in two weeks, so we could individually provide comment, but we can't do so as a, as a body. So I feel like that comment period time may need to be adjusted to allow us to digest this and then comment and, you know, not, is there, I guess, help us to understand the timeline with MEMA and FEMA. Are you up against, is it our own self-imposed or?
This is, it's in a sense, almost an arbitrary timeline. We have the flexibility within the grant timeline to make it longer or shorter. We just, you know, this is a, as you say, a fairly typical public comment window, uh, that we often default to, but if you. fairly typical public comment window that we often default to. But if you, the board or members of the public would like additional time, you can certainly coordinate with the project team and set a different date.
I think it would be helpful to coordinate with the town manager and obviously the fire chief to do that. But I think it would be important for us to digest it and certainly ask questions tonight, but be ready for further questions at the next meeting.
Bring it as an agenda item in the next meeting. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I planned on just submitting things directly, but we can do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, and
Do both, really.
We can do both, but I, since we try to act as a body, yeah, that would be good.
I had two things I wanted to say. One is that in the draft plan that will be posted for public comment, there'll be appendices, and this presentation is included in one of those appendices. And then the second thing is that once we send it to MEMA and FEMA after the comment period, however long it'll have, it may take a certain period of time. I don't know how long it traditionally takes, but it may be after the next select board meeting. They still may be reviewing it. It usually may take a couple of months for them to conditionally approve it before you all can approve the plan.
And is it typical that FEMA, with their conditional approvals, they make changes?
They'll, there's a lengthy checklist of statutory requirements, as you can imagine, if you've had any dealings with FEMA, they're very comprehensive. So what they'll do is they'll, they'll say, you know, we wanted you to add a little bit more about something here or there. So they'll give us very specific feedback about various things. We'll work with the project team. We'll, you know, we'll send it back for their review should they, you know, make us do edits the first time around.
I think, I think if we give, give us at least till the next board meeting to, not at least, but to the next board meeting, then we can comment.
Sure. And to Will's point, once FEMA has granted a conditional approval, no additional changes can be made to the plan.
Sure.
The only thing you do is you put the date it was adopted locally on there. If you change anything else, you have to go back through that process. That can take six to eight weeks to, for them to approve it. So, but we'll coordinate with the project team and the board in the town manager's office to make sure all the timelines are aligned.
Okay, Ian, Sean, any comments, questions?
No, I just agree that there's a lot to go through and still working through it, but I think having that extended time is good.
Can I just ask what, maybe this is, I don't know who this question goes to, but so we've done other studies. You just heard about one before, an assessment before your presentation. So we sort of create a prioritization. There's a lot of money that goes along with all of this. So how, what would, what's the next steps? As we prioritize, but then is there an implementation plan based on prioritization? Like, does that fall under capital, or could vary in some cases? Stormwater?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to let the chief and CMRPC speak to that because the hazard mitigation plan is really emergency management, and it's required.
Yep. One of those required services. Yeah.
Yeah, as Will mentioned, I think one of the key recommendations is to try to implement or integrate rather hazard mitigation concepts into your other planning activities. So I know you did a master plan a couple of years ago. You did a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan a few years ago as well. So all of this stuff, exactly the stormwater utility is part of this, as Chris Payant spoke about earlier, that kind of project also ties directly into this kind of plan. So it's, you know, I think that's a key implementation strategy, as well as forming a committee, or perhaps delegating an existing committee to try to, you know, meet from time to time to see, you know, what are the key implementation activities that can be done, and how to prioritize and sequence those things.
So would we, maybe this is a question for you, chief. Once this is accepted and it goes through all the processes, would we expect to sort of see, you know, some sort of matrix that you're overseeing that says, okay, I'm looking, the tree trimming needs to be done. I mean, I know that's a general statement, but there are some that are very specific and kind of, are we on track, off track? What's the cost scheduled? Like, is that?
Exactly. So like, when you saw on the plan, you would see an implementation study? I mean, sorry, implementation committee put together. We would look at the prior, the list of things in priority. We are afforded an opportunity to apply for MEMA and FEMA funds, like brick grants, et cetera, to take on some of these tasks. But if something was a super high priority and there was no grant funding available, you could potentially see that on the capital plan. But like myself and all your other department heads do, we try to seek alternative funding for a lot of these bigger projects first before we approach the taxpayer.
Chief, who sets the priorities?
We did as a committee, as your department heads.
Okay.
Based on our experience. The majority of them were.
FEMA, though, that's why.
No. We know our community better than, than others. We kind of seek the guidance of CMRPC and identify where we're most vulnerable in our town based off of our experience, seeing flooding, trees down, wires down, et cetera, every time we have a significant storm. This is not the first time since I've been the chief here that we've implemented this plan. We haven't, with last time, we didn't put a implementation committee together. A lot of these things are supported by Public Works. And when Chris Payant actually got hired, one of the first conversations we had was, if you've noticed, maybe you'll notice, this is a plug for them. We used to have a lot of power outages, and one of the first things that we addressed was, and he did, his department did all the work, trimming the trees back from a lot of the power lines, and we don't see power outages like we did at all. But this is behind the scenes, a lot of the stuff we do. He deserves all the credit. And really, I think that the town, the town wins. But really, that's, that's the way that that's worked in the past. A lot of the things in here are secondary to flooding right now. Did I answer your question?
Yes. Thank you very much.
And mine.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, we look forward to this couple-week process here, and we'll be discussing it more at our next meeting.
Did I say one more thing? I think, so we're going to advertise this out. And just if anybody watches this meeting, I think it's pretty important that we get feedback within the three-week, three-week period. We are also not perfect, so if we miss something, we would, we would love to hear it. It's not our plan, it's the community's plan. And our, our goal at the end of the day is, if there's a natural disaster, we want to reduce the impact to loss of life and, and property as much as we can. I think we're in very good shape now, but we can always be better. So if anyone is watching this, we really encourage you to read it and give your, give your feedback. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item 13, town meeting discussion with the town moderator. Welcome, John.
Hello, nice to you again.
Yes.
See if I can get my laptop plugged in without incident. Let's see how this goes. So while I try to get this started, I'll just do a quick reminder. Hi, I'm John Arnold, the town moderator. For anybody following along at home, let's see if I can get this to work. Okay. You guys can see that, okay?
Yep.
Okay. So just a quick reminder, when I was last here in April, it was just after the March annual town meeting, and I was just about to start a series of office hours where I was soliciting feedback from voters, and I promised you that I'd come back. Sorry it's taken so long. It took a while for me to actually have the meetings, then to pull information together, and then our schedules conflicted that I was leaving for vacation on the day of your, of your last, of your last meeting, and so I'm finally here. So, anyway, so I had, as I said, when I was here last, I scheduled three series of hour-and-a-half-or-so-long office hours, where it was just drop-in and people could talk. I will, I'll thank the school department for also publicizing them to get more feedback, to get more people to show up or to contact me. And so there were no sort of preconceived questions. It was people to drop in and let me know what they thought about town meeting in general. And people were invited whether they attended town meeting, didn't attend town meeting, or what have you. And so got 29 people to respond, either by coming in person or by sending me email. And it's not a random sample. It's not a very big sample, so I'm not going to bother telling you about percentages. But instead, I'm here to talk about sort of the themes that came up, because everyone seemed interested in that. The good news was, the conversations were robust and thorough. There were some very good ideas, some good anecdotal feedback, and we got information from voters who both were engaged and voters who wanted to be engaged. And so again, this is all going to summarize the themes and the feedback. So it's going to be four basic themes that I talk about. I also meant to mention, I know you have a packed meeting, and I know you're running late. I'm going to try to do this presentation as quickly as I can. If you would prefer to have follow-on conversation either at a future meeting, or even maybe wait and have a deeper conversation after the October town meeting, that's fine with me. I realize that between now and then, everybody's very busy. So in terms of the governance part of, as I gathered all my notes and the themes, a quote sort of stood out to me, which is that one of the attendees said that the opportunity for voters to be directly involved is very valuable. And I think that's a, I think that's a quote that I think most of the people, if not everyone who attended, would have agreed with. So essentially, the key thing here is directly involved. One of the key aspects of open town meeting is that every voter can choose to attend or not. And although there are some barriers to attendance, people who do attend and who can vote, get to vote their own conscience and don't have to persuade anyone how to vote. So almost everyone who contacted me or who came to the meetings seemed to want to talk about ways to improve the current system of government, the open town meeting, rather than change it, though I would note that there were one or two people who did suggest studying all the various options. Now, we'll see that the ways to improve it are not necessarily straightforward and simple, but we'll see throughout the themes that, that things range from very doable, targeted things we can try to do versus longer-range conversations. So just to, in terms of summarizing the anecdotes, we've all heard anecdotes about why people can or can't attend town meeting. And they were, and what I heard was very similar to what we hear. And so it was good to have actual, real-life people with anecdotes filling in things that we believe are the case. So for instance, we know that it's difficult for, for two parents and caregivers to both attend. Some people find that it's very hard to commit to a full day, especially now that we start at nine in the morning on Saturday for our annual town meeting. It had been going till 10 or 11 at night. And so we know that that's difficult. And of course, we found through conversations at town meeting and around, there's no single good day or time that satisfies everyone. So we do know that there's trade-offs about trying to get a representative sampling, and trying to get everyone who wants to be engaged to be engaged and to be able to attend. So we'll talk about that in the next slide. But I also wanted to mention that at least a handful of people men, mentioned that Westboro TV's live coverage was really helpful, especially for people who know that they can't commit to attend the entire day, but there are particular items that they would like to come for, and they definitely appreciate being able to pay attention during the day and see when they can be there. So interestingly, the, when we talked about improvement, the shortest short-term actionable items for improvement will come later in some of the future slides. But the two biggest ways to talk about improvement came up are things that would actually require a lot of work and probably even changes at the state law level. And the things that came up most frequently, and again, I didn't, I tried not to prompt these, though I did try to tease out things as they came up. But there's a lot of interest of the people who attended the sessions for a hybrid meeting, being able to have online meetings just like this. People would love to be able to do that. And I can talk for, I won't, but I could talk for a long time about the challenges of that, and what makes it hard to do, and what makes it hard to do fairly. And then there were also people who liked that there are some people who love to deliberate and work through the weeds and come up with the final proposals being, you know, motions or whatever, but they would prefer to be able to just get straight to the voting. So there was this discussion of deliberate first and vote later, that I think I had, I had mentioned when I spoke to you in March. So the hybrid format, a lot of, a number of people, again, we're talking about a sample of 29, so when I say a lot, it's not like we're talking about thousands of people. A number of people who, who contacted me would, would love the idea of maintaining, everybody can vote, but not everyone has to be there to deliberate in real time. So a hybrid, so the two ideas that came up, really, the hybrid really has to do with, it would be nice if there was a same time, but I don't have to be in the same place. And of course, there's problems with the current law that doesn't really allow that. There's a digital divide problem in terms of not everyone necessarily, you know, knows how to use or has internet or has a computer. And so you don't want to necessarily come up with a system of government that rewards some people who may have resources that not everyone has. And of course, there's all sorts of problems with making sure that the person who authenticates online is the person voting and things like that. But I do want to mention that there's interest in that, and there are a lot of people who thinks that that would help solve a number of the problems, especially for people who aren't necessarily working during town meeting, but who can't necessarily be at the high school for a whole day. And then to summarize the deliberate first, vote later, this would be an idea where there were sessions for the people who want to, you know, hear, ask the questions, hear the answers, formulate the, formulate the motions and come up with something. But then there are people who say, well, that would be nice. I, there are some people saying, I don't want to do that, or I know not everyone can do that. But it would be nice if somebody could do that, and then a week or two later, we could have a ballot where we just vote on all the articles. And so that would be this, discuss first, and then have a vote, either a vote-only meeting, vote-only meeting by ballot, or a vote-only meeting where people would show up and it's, you just go straight to, you know, vote, 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 vote. And of course, also some problems with the current law, also the details of how it would work in terms of, you know, would, would the people who did deliberate come up with the final motions, or would there be a series of amendments that would be put on the ballot, and then some sort of rank choice? But there's, so there's lots of details. But the interesting thing was, there were people who were interested in pursuing that because they think it would be an improvement. So there is ongoing work with these ideas. I can circulate if anyone's interested. There's a white paper that the Mass Moderators, Moderators Association has worked on. Hasn't really been detailed, updated since COVID, but we had it done right before COVID, and it actually became useful. And I'm one of the ones who helped write this. And it does talk about not only what are the legal barriers that prevent it, but also what are the things that would have to be done to allow sort of an online or a hybrid open town meeting. The good news was, is that during COVID, the State House did provide an allowance for representative town meetings to do a hybrid model, and there was some good results with that. And again, the reason why that was allowed and why it would work is that with representative town meeting, there's a fixed number of people who have to be equipped with computers and who have to be tested. And you can make sure that they're the ones who log in and do sort of that. And I know I had mentioned before that we're trying to chase into this idea that some of the other New England states actually seem to support this deliberate first, vote later. And I'll mention that Joshua Weiner is a summer volunteer in Representative Donahue's office, and he has been working on a number of things with Representative Donahue, and also Representative Donahue asked if I would, it'd help. And, and he's helped me find some details about what in New Hampshire they call the SB2-style town meeting. And it is a format that does seem to allow this deliberate first, vote later. And through Joshua's work, he's come up with a list of towns in New Hampshire that do this. And I'm in the process of trying to connect with town clerks or moderators or select board members to learn more about the mechanics and how that does. So not a quick fix, because it's not a Massachusetts thing, but just, I'm particularly curious about it, and I could certainly report back if I ever get in touch with that. So that's the summary of the first theme, which is just overall governance, which I already talked about. The second thing that I know was a big item at the town meeting was the citizens' petitions. And because of the citizens' petitions, the 13 of the, of the non-binding ones, this is what, this is what seemed to be the reason for most people to get in touch with me or to attend the sessions. And so here, another quote that came up that I think reflected what most, most people thought who got in contact with me in these office hours or the emails because they couldn't attend the office hours, was that the 13 non-binding citizens' petitions were an unpleasant and painful discussion, but people were proud of how the process worked and how the voters handled it. So I was heartened to hear that, and it reflected pretty much everything of what I've heard since the meeting. There was a, everyone seemed to understand that there's a need to balance the respect for free speech and the openness of the process, but given that the town meeting is a legislative body, it has to also respect the voter's time and the authority. And so unprompted, other than asking people what they thought could, could be done to, to make it better, there was a consensus of the people who, who attended the office hours or who contacted me, that people seemed to believe that 10 voters for the annual meeting was too few, and it too readily allowed the warrant to be overloaded with topics on which the town meeting didn't have the authority to act. Again, I want to emphasize that most people understood that they were certain, they were okay with talking about and acting on things where the town meeting had the authority. But the people who, who felt that the, that it would be better were that they didn't like having to take the time on things that really didn't have town meeting authority. So when this came up, I asked people what they thought. And most people seemed to think that having 100 signatures or 1% of the registered voters was sort of a barrier that would seem like, well, that would seem like, okay, we can deal, that would, that would seem to be fair in terms of making it harder, or at least to make it more voters interested in having these topics brought for discussion. So I know that right before the last meeting, I think it was Patrick, had sent, you and I had seen an email about some towns seeming to have guidelines that did raise the level to 10. Again, I looked into this a lot, and Joshua, the, the summer volunteer with Representative Donahue, also helped do some work on this. And so there, there do, as, as Patrick's email that he forwarded seemed to indicate, there do seem to be towns that have guidelines that discourage the petitions on things for which the town meeting doesn't have the authority. which the town meeting doesn't have the authority, but we couldn't actually chase down whether these guidelines actually prevent it. So, so Joshua and I read the, the links that, that were presented, and Joshua had had some conversations, and it's still ongoing, where he's trying to meet with, or have a call with some of the towns that do it. And so it seems to be that these guidelines that are published for the, you know, when the paper that's given to people who, who ask for citizens' petitions, it does say they should do this, but it's unclear whether towns actually stop, can stop it or not. When I tried to tease this out a little further, it does seem that there are some town councils who more aggressively advise the select boards that they represent that topics outside of the committee can be left off the warrant, so that does seem to be a case where there's some legal difference of opinion. But I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I will, I did note before the meeting and after the meeting that the law pretty clearly does say all subjects shall be put on the warrant without mentioning whether there's a need for relevance and authority. So the, at, at least two of the sessions where people showed up in, in person, we did a little brainstorming, and one thing that came to mind is that at the annual town meeting, the election as we know is Article I, and it's dealt with separately, and so there's no need to have deliberations at the town meeting session. And so the idea was, since the election is Article I of the annual town meeting, could the select board put non-binding question, non-binding articles as a question on the town election and have all the deliberation done out in the public, just as those like us who campaigned for public office are, and to essentially say, yes, it's on the warrant because Article I is on the warrant, but could there be ballot questions that just say, do you agree with this, yes or no? And so I haven't, it's just an idea that came up when we were discussing, but it may be a way, if there's a flood of these, to essentially ask town council, is given that Article I is part of the warrant, could the select board under the guidance of town council say these are non-binding? Could we have some agreement that it doesn't necessarily need the open discussion that, that happens at the deliberative part of town meeting, do that? So that's something that I think would be interesting to maybe ask town council sometime to say, what do they think about that? So that sort of summarizes where we were with citizens' petitions. The remaining two items are outreach and participation and voter education, which are all sort of intertwined, but I broke them into two just to emphasize a few points. In terms of outreach and participation, the people who, who contacted me or attended the office hours, there was definitely a desire for broader participation and engagement for all ages, genders, economic status. There's certainly some belief that, that it seems to be older people are the ones who can make the time to attend town meeting, and it would be interesting to actually have a, a better sense or a broader representation of Westboro at the meetings. So we had some brainstorming discussions amongst, you know, various people who wandered in and out about making the town meeting process more efficient in order, in terms of outreach and participation. So some of the ideas that came up would be, although we don't necessarily have all the details for town meeting, in the tax bill that gets released closest to a town meeting, there certainly, certainly could be the creation of a QR code that would go to a fixed page on the website that would have all the information, all the updated drafts that would be there, and I, and that would at least get people to a page that would be sort of like a living document and could be updated even after the tax bill arrived with more information, and it could at least give the projected time and date and things like that. Another thing that came up is that renters don't get tax bills typically, so could I or someone do some more direct outreach to try to get, for instance, the little infographics that I've been trying to do recently? Could those get placed in common areas at apartment buildings or like at the Del Webb community or what have you, where, where people could see them? And I'm going to try to do that a little bit, and try to figure out where the largest of the apartment buildings are and actually try to reach out and see if I can do that for this fall town meeting. Another idea was to, was to see if the town clerk or if anybody, you know, depending on how the database is, is accessible of who actually attends town meeting, is could there be a report run on the age, the precinct, you know, of people who attend town meeting just to try to fill in the anecdotal information of who does actually attend, so we could try to get a sense of how accurate is the perception that it's mostly people who live in houses who are up like 45 or older? So that's something I'm hoping to talk to town clerk about that. There was also an idea that all of us together could work more directly with community advocate and any other sort of local print or social media to increase voter awareness. I know a lot of us do that ourselves, which is sort of, if we had a, if we could do even more of it or come up with an organization, an organized way of doing it. And I wanted to mention that one group of voters who couldn't attend the office hours but who I met with separately because they couldn't attend the times I could, actually drafted a, a pretty thorough survey of information, trying to get some demographics as well as asking people why they do or don't attend and would or wouldn't they, to get information like I got anecdotally on a larger scale. And I had sort of asked them to hold off on doing that themselves until I talked to, with you were doing it more, but that's something that either I could do or we could do together or we could have the, you know, the, the town staff do that as actually, and I can share that, that draft if anyone's interested. And then, so also the, in terms of voter education information, there were two key ideas that came up, is that everybody seemed to think that town meeting would run better. Of course, we can't make people learn about town meeting before they show up, but we thought if there were more opportunities for more people might. And over time, we get more and more people doing it. So the, this led to brainstorming sessions about what can we do before town meeting to try to provide a, you know, better, higher quality, deeper information to improve the level of discourse, efficiency and effectiveness? And the first idea was this idea of having a living document version of the warrant. So the idea, we know we get draft one, we get draft two, but what came up during this brainstorming is that if people want to say, I want to learn more about this zoning article, it's very hard to go through the town website and find all the minutes or all the recordings of the meetings where that article was talked about. And so the idea is, could we have a webpage that would be a, essentially an ongoing evolution of the warrant that in, in addition to the, the article, the, the informational statement, that there could be links to say, here's the minutes of the meeting, or watch starting at minute 12 of this planning board meeting or things like that, where we could get people to essentially make it easier for people to find out all this work that's already been done, because we know we have a history of saying like, well, there's all this work that's already been done. And even, and I've had, I had people at these tell me like, yeah, but if I try to find it, it's like way too much work. So I might try to do this and see if I, if I can do that, if I can, you know, to find out like which finance committee meetings had this, do that, and so that's something I might want to try for the October town meeting. Won't be perfect, but if I have time, I, I may try to do it. And then the, I think this is the last page, because I know, trying to not use it too much of my time. And this was a much deeper fascinating idea that, again, this came up from a group of four voters who couldn't attend my office hours but who I met with separately. And this is not, this is not just town meeting, but it's essentially how to try to make it that talking about big projects is easier, because we all know, everybody has an opinion, like should we spend $2,000 on, back in the day, fireworks, or should we do this? But we have, we have these large green projects or large building projects. The, the idea that was brought to me was, would it not be wonderful if we could evolve essentially a uniform standard process and set of guidelines to help voters evaluate projects and to have ongoing evaluation of the expected outcomes after the project so people can feel good about how the projects proceeds? So it would almost be like this living evolving briefing book where the project would be presented as, as all the representatives went to hear, came to the select board, went to the finance committee, if it was a school project, go to the school building committee or whatever, but this briefing book that essentially say, here's what we're trying to do, here's why we're trying to do it, here's the outcomes we expect, have an ongoing built, you know, frequently asked questions built in there of what's been done, see it change over time. And the, and again, as I tried to summarize, summarize the idea of, of the four people that spoke to me, the idea would be that if there was a, here's what we're going to do and here's how we ourselves want to evaluate it, and to tell the voters, here's how we'd like you to evaluate it, it could actually help provide some similarity of comparison of projects over time. And although we all know that every project would have its own uniqueness, there are some things like cost per square foot doing this, you know, what is, what the, the outcomes of the green components and doing this, that and the other. And essentially, it would be a common ground of homework that would, that rather than go, having separate things to every committee, could essentially, it would be if somebody came here first, I don't know, the finance committee, they'd not only see the same briefing book, but they'd see the briefing book augmented with these are the questions that came up at the select board and things like that. And it could even lead to fewer times a project team would need to attend various meetings for updates. And so that, going back to when I was on the finance committee and when I was on the capital expenditures planning committee before that, it sounds like a very, very ambitious project, it sounds like a large project, but it actually also sounds like a good idea that might be worth trying. And I know we have a lot of large projects that are already underway, and it would be too hard to go back and sort of retrofit this, but I was thinking this might be something that, that the select board could think about, and maybe some upcoming project, you know, mid-sized project, maybe actually try doing it just to do that. So I don't want to take all of your time, but I did want to thank you for the opportunity to let me summarize what I've heard. I'm one of those lucky people, I'm not a multi-member body, so I don't have to post meetings and get quorums and do all that. So I thought it was an interesting opportunity for me to just let people, you know, come in, tell me what they thought, and I thought it'd be useful to summarize to you and for other people who might watch this. It'd be great to continue the discussion now or at future meetings. And I know I'm going to continue to think about these things and grow them ideas and hope you do too, because I think together we all share the goal of improving our town's governments, governance, whatever it is, in trying to meet the needs of, of every voter as best we can. So thanks.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate the, the work and the effort and certainly the involvement from the community to have those discussions with you. You know, I think at this point, I just, I think it'd be great if, if maybe we could just level set on two things, make sure we understand the role of board in, in this conversation, and also understand what the next steps, the appropriate steps are, because I kind of lump the things that you're talking about here into two categories. One are things that will require bylaw and state review, and other things are things that we could probably do as a community without having to go through that. So I guess I wanted to understand a little bit more, if Christie, if you have any comments on, again, the role of the board in this process and, and next steps, and then we can have a wider discussion.
I guess I would put it, I guess, in two buckets, but maybe different ones. I think there's a, there's a, sort of the latter sides are more about how we communicate with the community, which I think is, is probably something that, you know, we would certainly be interested in feedback, but I think we would have to sort of understand that better as a staff and that's, it is, I think, I, I agree with you that it sounds like a great thing, but it is a huge effort, like a huge effort. So I do think that we need to make sure that that's a goal, and that we've all decided that that's a priority over other things, and then we need to sort of talk about that internally and probably bring something back, and then maybe get feedback. But the other piece of it, I think, is, it, it feels, I, I think John has some really good thoughts about people who obviously really care a lot about the topic, but it seems to me that you would want to do more outreach to understand what direction you were headed in, and I'm, so I'm not sure if that's a committee. It feels like a committee, it feels like committee work to sort of say, here's the things we're really concerned about that we're hearing, you know, sort of more broadly that we're concerned about, and here's our, our sort of recommendations. But that's kind of what I'm thinking, very.
So it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the direct action of this committee to, to take that on, the, the idea would possibly to be, create a, you know, similar to a charter committee type?
I would think you would do like an ad, well, I guess if you wanted them to look at form of government, that might be a larger thing. If you're just creating some sort of ad hoc committee to, you know, reviews, you know, some of these things related to town meeting, that, that might be different. So you, this, so the select board would, I would think, would create a charge and, and stand up the committee, and then they would come back and, and report back to you, and I'm sure you would include.
Or the moderator.
Tom moderator, or the moderator, yeah.
Could create the committee.
Yeah, or we do it together, I mean.
Or jointly.
I think there's enough here that rather than jump, I mean, my personal opinion is there was enough here, rather than jumping straight into like, let's do a charter committee, because that would require.
Yeah.
Figuring all this out. It may just be a, a more focused committee on just go find out more from more than 29 people and then figure out what, how does that fan out into three or four things? I mean, so. And also, we'll, we'll know now after we see how the October meeting goes.
Yeah, because I'm sure people as they're watching, not just us, but people are, have lots of thoughts and ideas and, you know, good intentions on how we could possibly improve this. So let me open it up to the board to see what other.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some tactical feedback, there's some feedback that can result in some tactical actions as well as some more strategic ones. This is a great start to a process, I think, more information gathering, more public input. Before we start, you know, let's make sure we really understand the problems and the priorities before we come up with a solution.
Yeah.
Of, you're a programmer, you know.
That's right.
Understand the problem before you fix it. But some of the tactical things, I think, are, you know, doable with respect to outreach. You know, you mentioned, you know, more visibility in large apartment complexes, the library does regular programs at the large apartment complexes. So there's a mechanism and opportu, you know, there's a potential collaboration and opportunity mechanism. So looking at some of those tactical things, I think we can execute fairly easily, you know, fairly low overhead as far as some of the outreach and the education pieces go. And so I, I'd be interested in seeing some of that move forward while we still have that big step back and say, you know, okay, is, you know, does the SB2 work? I know some communities are very big on, I think the term's consensus agenda.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda for town meeting, which limits the deliberation or intends to.
I mean, it's maybe, I mean, because John and I have had this conversation.
We don't, we don't call it the consent agenda, but our version of consent agenda is the multipart items where you can pull them out for discussion. There's no way of avoiding discussion, but you can try to make it. So I, my personal belief on consent agenda is it almost puts the, it makes a voter feel bad if they want to say, I don't agree with that. So I like our version of it, which is, here's all these things, if everybody's fine, let's just go and vote, but if they don't, we'll call and pull them out once, and that way there's no onus of, you're a bad person if you say, I would like to ask this question about this.
So the regularly recurring articles is a, is.
Right. All those multipart things we do is our version of the consent agenda, yeah.
Like I said, more conversation.
Yeah, precisely.
I got lots of thoughts. Okay, others? Ian or Sean? Go ahead, Sean.
Quick comment. I think, John, you mentioned that nearly all the respondents thought that 10 votes to get an item on in-class town meeting was too few. I don't know if that's something that this board wants to look at more immediately versus, you know, what we'd be looking for from a, you know, more additional feedback moving forward. Thoughts?
I'll just say, the, I'll just tell you what I heard, because I have spoken with, with Kate Donahue, at least, not all of our thing, but that would, it would require a state law, it's unclear whether there would be agreement from mass moderators, mass media association and other legislators of whether that's a problem that needs to be solved, because it could open up the can of worms about addressing everything, but that would be a discussion certainly that this board and other select boards across the state could have. We certainly, you know, have feedback about it, but I don't know, I, again, I'm not town council, I'm not an attorney, I don't know of a way for Westboro alone to fix that problem, but it could be worth finding out whether, whether you or we together would like to take the lead on seeing if anyone wants to take that on or not.
I say, let's lead the way.
I understand that there is one community that has a 50-vote limit.
Yeah, precedence has been set, I mean, it already exists today.
Now, who is that? Because I haven't found them, but I can try to talk to them.
I thought it was Newton?
Do we know who it is?
I, I'd have to go back, I'd have to go back to my notes, but I get back to you on that, John.
Those are home rule?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, that's my point, there's these things that require to go up to the state, so if there's, you know, is that, is that the priority?
Yeah. I haven't been able to hear for sure that if we had a bylaw or what, can we, can we unilevel, can we have a bylaw or a home rule charter that override state law? And I haven't talked to any attorneys to, in order to get that question answered. So, but that's a path of action that could be taken.
And it's.
So it's a quick one.
Yeah, I, I would be, Sean, to your question, I'd be very interested in understanding if that is a, getting council's opinion on that. And I, I think the suggestion, and it's not the first time we've heard this, you know, 100 or 1% of the registered voters is, seems sort of, throw the dart at the board, seems reasonable. It's not a, it's not a huge barrier to overcome when you think about running for election, which is different, but you know, you've got to get some number of vote signatures.
And I think it'd also be worth in the short term, leading up to town meeting, we did get advice from council about other communities that have voted not to put certain citizen petitions on the warrant. And there was feedback, one, I think it was Town of Maynard was one, where the court said they did have to and gave very specific parameters.
Maybe there's something there.
It might be worth, and the parameters were that, even though it's not something, if I remember correctly, it's a, it's not an action that town meeting can take, but it does advise. it does advise an action that a town board or committee could take, right? As opposed to something that's totally out of the jurisdiction of any town entity.
Oh, I'm sure.
And so.
I don't.
I'd have to go back and look at it, but I'm wondering if it's worth just.
Well, we've got some history, certainly. It was a popular topic, so.
Some research to see, if it's not in law and case law, if there's anything.
So good, Sean.
Yeah. Yeah, John, so Weston requires 50 signatures.
Weston, that's it. Ian?
Yeah, I guess just to this point, I mean, I think there are some good ideas there, but I almost, are we jumping into something? We've had one town meeting where this was an issue and now we're trying to solve it. I think it's, I think we all agree that it was difficult, took time, et cetera. I agree with the quote that John put in there, that the outcome was positive, but I wonder whether we see what happens at this town meeting or maybe in, in March to see what next steps. I actually think there are some options out there. I think the option that John put in to think about putting it on at least the March ballot, I kind of like that idea of putting these things that are non-binding onto the potentially election. It only solves it if, for one town meeting, not for others. But besides that, I think these are all good ideas. I personally just kind of want to digest them a little bit more. Now that John's explained, because some of my questions, I still do have some questions on the, the book, whatever. It sounds something similar to what we do already for site plan review, where kind of is this iterative process where it comes to various boards? We have the ability to, you know, provide comments and then before it goes to planning board. So I think that, again, I always want to understand a little bit more. And then finally, I did like the idea, but I, again, I don't know how it would work of potentially making the warrant more of a living document where we're able to link to those articles, kind of the meetings or conversations or presentations that are on there, if there's a way to do that, you know, smartly with the website, new website, et cetera. So I think there's, there are definitely some good ideas there. I think it's, I think, I don't know whether it's the committee or what we talked about. I don't know. I don't have a recommendation at this point, but I think there's some definitely things for us to consider and come back on.
Thanks, Ian. I guess I'll just give you some quick feedback on your presentation, John, on some of the things that resonated with me, certainly not a complete list, and I look forward to, you know, the discussions of the board in the future. I am very much in support of, if we're going to open up a conversation with state around, you know, number of signatures required for a citizen's petition on the warrant, you know, to try to solve the problem of efficiencies and controversies on non-binding articles, I'm in support of trying to move those to, you know, a town election, a town ballot. We do that today, the state does that today with nine non-binding questions on the ballots already. Why can't communities do the same thing? Another thing, you know, you talked about, you know, splitting the deliberation in the vote. Maybe there's a hybrid of that. I know we like to use that word hybrid. But batching topics at town meeting that say, hey, we're going to have deliberation on these five things, and I don't know what the appropriate number is, and then we're going to have a vote after those five things, so that people can come for a batch of topics that may be similar. Zoning is an example of common topics. So is there an opportunity there? Could you, you know, one of the things I'm worried about is splitting a meeting, if you were to have deliberation at one and then having to host a whole nother meeting, there's a cost associated with that. Do you deliberate at a meeting and have ballot for the vote? And opening up the voting for an entire, as we heard today, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, allowing a community where moms and dads who are working, et cetera, can show up at any time during that, you know, 13-hour period to vote on those things that have already been deliberated? And they can go back and watch the videos of the deliberation if they want. That's, you know, I'm just thinking, we're going to noodle on different ideas here. Those are some of the ideas that come to my mind on that one. You mentioned surveys. You know, I was thinking about how during the town meeting, you know, there's a lot of commotion at the beginning of the meeting, where you're getting set up and things like that. Maybe there's an opportunity to use those clickers to have people answer survey questions as testing the system beforehand to say, you know, what is your age? What is your sex? How often, how many years have you been coming to town meeting? You know, you know, whatever, whatever the questions are, where we as a community want to understand, so that we drive more efficiency and more, you know, opportunity into the I mean, those are just, again, some of those quick thoughts I had as you were presenting, and I'm not sure, I don't think we want to take up a lot of time tonight trying to solve these problems, but, and maybe we need to have it as a topic in a future meeting to discuss how we want to move this forward through development of a committee, either through yourself or us as the board to establish that committee. So I'm just throwing it out there. Shelby, did you have anything?
Yeah, trying not to repeat anything other than just to, where I do repeat, just to give some in-agreement kind of comments. So also interesting around kind of the living warrant, that's interesting, but full appreciation of how much work that could take, but that could be valuable. I've already mentioned the citizen's petition sort of threshold, so very interested there. And Patrick, I also, it's interesting about kind of Article I as a ballot for that specific purpose.
Yes.
Let's see. So I'm wondering, you know, we've kind of done the 9:00 AM start time, should we, we've done it, I think we've said, oh, it's working well, but is it really working well? So I just ask myself that question. Should we roll that back and extend it over more days? Also understand there's a cost to doing that, which also reminds me that as you're, I know you talk with Debbie frequently, where are we at with the buying our own system?
Yeah, I will, I will check in with Debbie. Debbie and I have had meetings with and demos from two vendors from which we could actually purchase and lease and license software rather than having the whole setup.
Okay.
And so we had the last one like the day before I went on vacation, and so I'll be meeting with Debbie soon to find out what that is.
Okay.
But I thought the two demos went well.
Yep.
I'm not sure I have a preference or, Debbie was going to do some, some research and I'm doing research and, but that, but we have made progress on that. On my past years, we never.
Awesome. No, no, that's great. And I assume there'd be some collaboration with Mark Stockman, just, yeah, awesome. Okay. I sort of wonder what the role is of the select board around engagement outreach and getting the word out. And Alan, I appreciate your comment about the library and how they're already in a lot of those communities and doing the traveling library, so that's, I think there's a natural partnership there. I'm wondering if, if it would be possible at this upcoming special town meeting to have a survey, like a QR code that's accessible as well as a paper, to ask some of these questions of voters, including, are you interested in being on an ad hoc committee that would further address these things? It's a captive audience, people have time to fill out the survey, and maybe it's even something that Westboro TV, if folks aren't attending, could say, hey, there's a survey you want to fill out. So I'll hold my other comments at this point, but great.
Yeah.
Thank you for the work, and it's progress, progress not perfection.
For all the ideas, I didn't mean they were things you had to do. They were just ideas that came up to be discussed about.
Yeah, no, no, but progress, I mean, what I, I think is important here is progress not perfection, because I don't think we ever achieve that.
It's very iterative.
Yep.
If you want me to come back in the future, let me know.
Will do. Any final thoughts or, sorry, go ahead, Kristi.
Yeah, so I just, I guess, first of all, I just look at Weston, and it says 50 signatures in accordance with MGL, which is not in accordance with MGL, so I guess I would want to understand that better.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we're in into every time we try to find somebody to talk to, to say, did they actually enforce it or can they enforce it? Or are they just trying to make somebody challenge them on it?
It's just odd that they said in accordance with a law that doesn't say that, so.
Unless there's a home rule petition, which is MGL, so.
But that's, no, that's, that would typically end up being your charter. I mean, yeah, you don't refer to it that way typically, but anyway, doesn't matter.
Those are the questions, right?
So I guess my question is, what is, what are you, we sort of said we should ask town council all these questions, so I'm happy to ask the questions. I just, I guess I just want to go back to when we thought we heard a lot of folks very upset about the October town meeting being on a Monday. And so I think we all thought that it, we would move it to a Saturday and that would, then that would go really well, and it wasn't as easy or as clear as I think we thought. And this was only a couple of years ago. And so I'm just wondering if you want more input into it before we go down that, I mean, obviously you want to hear from town council, but how quickly are we sort of moving down the road of trying to change the number of petition signatures?
Well, I don't want to minimize it, but I would, I would like to hear an answer sooner than later, if that's not an onerous request.
I don't think it is. I guess I'm just trying to figure out what timing, because then you have to decide what the right number is.
Right, I mean, but in terms of any action we would take or, and what that process would be, lots of questions around that. I mean, I'm not thinking we would do anything until annual town meeting.
Okay, that's kind of my question.
And I'm not even thinking we're ready for that yet, right? Because my question about, for example, well, I get it, but my point is this, if we're going to open up that conversation, right, about modifying town charter or switching, you know, the number of votes on petition, is that not the same as also saying, hey, why not move forward with ballot instead? So my question is, should we not be forming this committee first that goes and starts to address these questions and bringing it back to this, to us or through John, if, depending on how that gets formed, formed? And then say, what is the option that's recommended to solve the problem? To your point, Alan, you know, you've got to identify that problem and what's the best solution for it. I'm not convinced that just simply changing the number of petition signatures is solving the problem, because you still have those articles. People will go get the signatures. You're still going to have articles get on. And if your, if your intention is to prevent non-binding, I'll say to optimize the meeting by dealing with the non-binding articles is simply changing the number of petition signatures, the way to do it, because you're still going to get those articles.
But can we, I guess I'm thinking, can't we ask council if both options are, that's kind of where I was going.
Yeah, I would love to ask that question.
I don't, I, on the, on the citizen's petition, non-binding, key word there, or keywords, non-binding, right? I feel like this board should be able to, with John's input, make a recommendation on that. I mean, get some input from council, what's allowed, and then kind of bring that forward.
Well, again, to simplify my question, is the goal to make it more difficult, for lack of a better word, to get a citizen's petitions on regardless of, if it's non-binding, onto the warrant? Or is the goal to optimize the town meeting fully by removing those non-binding petitions?
So I, I think it's certainly more to make, for me, and what I've heard, is to make town meeting more efficient and true to its purpose, like that the matters that actually are binding to the town and tax dollars, et cetera, and to create a higher, a more realistic bar. I mean, 10 signatures, for God's sakes, that's ridiculous. Like, you know what I mean? Like, so however we can do that, but to make it a more, you know, authentic representative process.
And I would put a finer level of ground, to me, it's not binding versus non-binding, because there's binding, but within non-binding, you have different types of potential petitions. A non-binding petition that is within the scope of a unit of town government is something I think you want as part of the town meeting process, because it will provide the sense of the community to a board or a committee on work that they are authorized or in the process of doing, right? Even though it's non-binding, you can't, you can't force the planning board to change a zoning, right, without writing an article to do it, and there's a process for that. But if it was a non-binding petition about, you know, to get the sense of the community on a particular zoning change, I know it's not a great example, but that's relevant to the work of the planning board, is there can be many that are relevant to our work. But then there are citizen's petitions for which, no matter what the outcome is, there's no entity of the town that could act on it or take it under, even take it under advisement, because it's not within the scope of what the town's legally and constitutionally able to do as a government entity.
Yeah, let me clarify. I'm talking specifically about citizens, but non-binding articles that are, fall under some jurisdiction of the, of the governance of this town committee or otherwise, that to me is different. That is, that is different because it's, you know, it's, it has a higher threshold and it sort of gets vetted through the processes. We've seen time and time again, sometimes not for, you know, there's folks that come forward and want to make a change, and I think it's well-intended, but they just don't go through a process. They sort of say, this is what, this is what 10 people said they want, and so, and I'm allowed to do it, right? Binding or not. So, so to me, a binding one would go through a process that is well-established, that it's the non-binding ones at the citizen's petition level to me that are the potentially...
Non-binding relevant.
Well, that's the problem. Who defines relevancy?
Well, because it's, but it's a matter of law. We can't change state policy on medical, you know, on health insurance. We can't, you know, change the affordable, you know, we can't change federal law.
But I guess I would just say a citizen's petition, because it doesn't follow the same process that we're all used to. It's, and, you know, I just, again, just go back to, it's not so onerous to get 100 signatures to bring something forward, binding or not, whether it goes to a ballot or not. Honestly, I'm less concerned about that, to be honest with you. I would just like to see a higher threshold, and I think that, I say it's a simple lift, I'm sure the people at the State House would disagree with me, but.
Alan makes an interesting point. Let me just, real quick, John, let me see if, and Sean, have any comments here? I just want to get, open it up.
Yeah, I mean, I just go back to my thing. I mean, I think that we've, we had an issue at the last town meeting, we've had non, we've had non-binding and binding citizen's petitions before without issue, so I think, I'm still debating, we're spending a lot of time on this, and I think there's a lot of options here, but is it really? And it goes back to that question, what are we, what are we really trying to tackle? And I think Alan was spot on that there are non-binding citizen's petitions that we've had that haven't had an issue with 10 votes, and no one's had an issue with that, and are we making it more difficult for folks to bring those forward that are what I would deem relevant? So I don't know whether the last meeting was a one-time aberration, we're trying to solve something that was an aberration, or is it something that we expect to see ongoing and that we need to spend a lot of time figuring out how we're going to address it? So I just still am questioning, we're spending a lot of time on this right now, and is it really an issue that raises, rises to the top of what we need to address?
So with all articles that go through a process, regardless of the committee or board that's bringing it forward, go through a lot of work. They go to this board, they go to finance committee, they talk with John. There is a process, and while they may not be getting signatures for those, there's a process and a lot of work. I do not think it's fair that a citizen could say, I think this is a problem, binding or not, and I'm getting 10 signatures. I just, I, I think it, we saw that it made a mockery last time of our process, and I just think in this political environment we're in, it's, it, you know, we're setting ourselves up for more. Maybe it'll never come up again, and this will be the exhaustive conversation tonight, and we get some counsel and we say, well, we did a lot of work for not, but, or, and maybe we don't make changes. But I just, I think there has to be a higher threshold, you know, it comes to mind, just really quickly, the group over on Fisher Street that wanted to install a slowdown sign, flashing light, right? They had to go out and get some signatures, but that, that affects many people driving on those busy roads, right? They only had to get 10. It was binding on the town because it was action, there was a sign that had to be purchased. But I think that should be a higher threshold. It shouldn't just be, hey, my 10 neighbors think this is an issue. So, anyway, I'm being a dead horse, but I think it, I think we should take it on.
That's exactly why I think it, that's one reason why I lean towards the smaller number, although I'm not sold on keeping the smaller number. But John, any final thoughts? I just, I want to get on with it.
I'd just like to go back to Christie's question, whether the committee decides it needs, whether the board needs, needs a committee or not. I think it would be useful if someone could find out what, what options the town actually has. Can the town do some sort of home rule petition to change the number or not, or is it a requirement of state law? Just to know. Just to know, because then there can be a policy question about should it be changed.
So is that-
But I mean, I just think it would be useful.
So my question would be to Christie, is that an action of forming, of a committee that we formed to go do that homework, or is that something that your office can provide? And then a committee can be formed to say, okay, now we understand our options, as a committee, we can make some recommendations within the boundaries of those options? Ian, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just think with that, I think there's more pieces that we want to explore there, because I think the question about pushing back a little bit on whether we, as a board, can not allow for some of those system petitions to go on town meeting more. So we have a little bit more authority on there, whether it's 10 votes or 100 votes. So I'd like, I'd like some answers on that, because it sounds like, from what John said, there's differing opinions by legal counsel within the state. So I think that's a piece, so I think if we're addressing it, it kind of goes, do you address all of it, so we see what those options are?
Okay, Christie?
I, the only thing I was going to say is, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of like nuance to it, so it sounds like it requires more of a presentation. Like, an example is, we're talking about the ballot as being on the warrant, so then therefore things are part of the warrant, so maybe they can just go on the ballot. The ballot has to be, the ballot is on something called the warrant, so it's just like tonight when you did, so, so whether or not, I mean, you could do the local election as a separate warrant, then it's just the election warrant, and so it doesn't necessarily mean it's part of the annual town meeting warrant, it just happens to be where we are. So I just think that it's, it's going to be a lot of education, and so, so I, I don't, I'm not sure that we're ready for that on September 10th, I guess, maybe is, maybe is that where I should start?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we've got more work to do on this, for sure. John, I really appreciate your time coming in tonight and sharing with the work.
If you want me to just start some of this, let me know, and then defer over to Christie or whatever, but, you know.
John, I could be wrong, that the, I think my hometown of York has that, hear the articles, vote later, by, you know, so, and being that Maine used to be part of Massachusetts, maybe there's a, you know, historical relevance there.
I'll, I'll add that, because I think I also have a friend who's in one of the New Hampshire towns that I was going to talk to. All right. Anyway, I'm, I'm here to help, I'll do a little pre-work if you want me to, I just don't want to overstep my bounds, but I have more time to do some of this than you folks do, so, and I'm also interested in it, so, all right. Well, thank you very much, I know we already used more than our half hour, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving on to item 15, the E.L. Harvey contract, and we are-
Oh, special town meeting warrant?
Excuse me, special town meeting warrant. Item 14.
So I, last week, sent out the special town meeting warrant for October. There are 14 articles on the warrant currently. You, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up. You will hear about the zoning articles at your joint meeting with the planning board on September 3rd, and we'll just be prepared to go through some of these. I, I guess, I can run, I was planning to run through them, we're, I know we're late, so.
We're a little behind.
It would be great to hear which ones we might need presentations on.
Okay, so I'll just put it out there. Any particular articles, folks are interested in having presentations on?
I, I would request that we go through the way we normally do, we just, Article 1 question, like, want to hear a presentation.
Do you want to do that now, tonight?
Sure. There's only 14, we can do it quick.
Prior year's bill, there's no actual bill, it's just on there as a placeholder in case we need it, so. The fiscal '25 budget adjustments, so these are, these are really just moving money from salary and wages to expenses, or expenses to salary and wages. So for the finance department, for example, we have a savings and salary and wages, we have continued to use some of our contracting consulting, specifically with Leah Talbot, to, to get everyone up to speed, and so, so we have a need to move some of that savings from salary and wages to expenses, so there's no impact, none of these have a tax impact. Police department, we've hired three additional officers who need to go to the academy and all of the uniforms and things like that. Again, there's a savings from the vacancies, moving that to expenses, and then the landfill salary and wages, we would be moving money potentially from expenses to salary and wages, so we could continue that waste management program coordinator position, which has been really successful in terms of monitoring at the transfer station. So those final numbers are to come, so we can talk about them another time if you want. The FY '25, this, you'll need more information, this is a budget adjustment for the water department.
So I would want to hear about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
The fire department contract that we just talked about tonight, this is a, an article that would fund retroactively any obligations in FY '24, and then amend the FY '25 budget, so this would have an impact to, to reflect the agreed-upon terms for fiscal '25. There's cart path repair project in the recreation department, this is, would be come out of country club retained earnings, I suspect you would want a presentation on that one. Similarly, the stormwater system improvement, DPW, I think can, can come and give an update, but this is to increase the previous appropriation. Community center, you'll talk about on August 29th, what we, what the number would be, but this is, would be for some level of fit up at the community center. Community preservation program budget, this actually will be a, an article going forward that you'll see in annual town meeting, but we need to do it for fiscal '25. Essentially, it moves the money into those buckets that we're required to put it in, so the historic resources, housing, open space, and then also moves money out for administrative expenses for the purpose of funding admin position. So we were able to do that in fiscal '24 without town meeting, that's how it works, but then going forward, it has to be in town meeting, so you'll see this again in March, and then always annual going forward. The transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust is money coming from the stabilization mitigation funds related to the Pulte project, where they didn't build the 25 affordable units. We get an annual distribution from them, and so that money has been sitting there, it's for the purpose of affordable housing, it would just go into the Affordable Housing Trust, we've done this one before.
No question on that one for me. I mean, it's the standard, it's what we've done.
Yeah. The next one is acceptance of law for the municipal prudent investor standard, so we can come and talk to you about that. This really just gives more flexibility in, in our investments, and so there's more to it, and so we'll can come and make that presentation. B-WALL trail easements, so these are identified and needed, B-WALL trail easements, so this is the planning department, this will come up at your joint meeting.
Okay, great.
And then similarly, there's an update to the stormwater management bylaw, so when we have DPW here, they can talk to that as well. These are just really long. I think the next, let's see, yeah, I think all the, the next few are just the zoning articles, which they'll talk again on the 3rd. So I think I have a good understanding of sort of the things that we would need to hear from folks on, so I can schedule them scheduled for September.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Sure.
Okay. Now moving on to item 15, E.L. Harvey contract.
Okay. So since we last met, we have gone, we have had some meetings and have exchanged emails with folks at Harvey's. We're still waiting on some tonnage information in order to better understand our obligations related to paying for recycling, which I had brought up the last time, that that was not anticipated, but it's something that they've added. And so we're trying to, to look at our July tonnage and annualize that, so that we can understand how that impacts the budget. And we also have, had, had some, had just a couple of points, I think, that we were still negotiating in terms of language. So at this point, I, I am not requesting an execution of the contract, but rather an additional extension.
So I would-
Can we provide some feedback?
To what?
To the contract and the attachments. Are we, I mean, they were, they're-
So Shelby is your representative to the negotiation, and we've gone back and forth with town council, so it was really in there for your information. I'm not sure that we can make, I'm not sure that we would be able to make big changes at this point, but I guess if, you know, it's up to you.
Yeah, so I, I would just say, if there's something that you feel like we, like, totally missed, right, that I would be interested in that, because we are still actively discussing that, but I would just, since it is a contract negotiation, I guess I would just, like, put that through to Christie directly versus here.
You can let me know.
Okay.
And, and I would say, since our last meeting, the Waste Connections, E.L. Harvey team has been more responsive, but we're still not there. So I do think we're in a position where we need to grant an extension for the work to continue, and hopefully wrap it up soon. But it has been better, but we're not there yet.
Okay. So I guess since this is under negotiations-
I know.
I, I'm just wondering, and I certainly appreciate the work Shelby and Christie and team have put into this, but is this, is this not appropriate to, I, I don't think we should be discussing the terms of the contract in open meeting, because of negotiations. So I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the question, should, should there be an opportunity in executive session to dig deeper into this?
There is none. There, it's not, there's no exemption that allows for that. So that's why, that's why you appoint someone to, to work on your behalf. So, I mean, I, this is, this development of this contract has been many, many months.
Oh, I know it has. I get it.
So if you, it's, if you want to raise something, you certainly can, but that, that is the purpose of appointing someone to work on your behalf.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would say, understanding where we're at, but if there's, if there's a wild miss, or you feel like, I would just, I would like, I would, I think, share them with Christie and, and with me, that would be great.
Okay.
Well, you should send them to me.
Oh, Christie's right.
Send to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, Ian, Sean, anything? Nope.
I'm glad we're making progress, though, so.
Yes, progress is good. So, sorry, was there a request to extend?
Yes. I don't have the extension in there, so if you can just authorize me to execute an extension, I guess, um-
Till the next meeting?
I would-
I think when we last talked, it was September 21st was what you were looking for, wasn't it?
September 11th was what I was looking for.
Okay, September 11th. So is that what you're looking for now?
Yeah, we can do that, and then just bring it up again, if we need to.
So I'll make the motion.
You make the motion.
That's Christie's, the extension to September 11th.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, looking for a roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Keo, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Okay, you got it. Lots going on on aisle 11.
I'll, I'll send an email, that's fine.
Yeah, I have some feedback too, so. Nothing monumental. Okay, so item 16, a men's chief assessor's job description and classification.
Yep, so we're looking to, obviously, we're looking to hire a new chief assessor. Two years ago, we had added some responsibilities to the chief assessor job description, which at the time, our chief assessor was performing, and, and in doing so and applying our typical criteria, necessitated moving it up a classification. Given that we have pulled the town accountant role out of the finance director, it seems appropriate to, at this point, review the chief assessor job description and identify things that would actually sit with the finance director, as opposed to the chief assessor. So at this point, we're providing the amended chief assessor job description, which puts it back down from an S8 to an S7, and which is on the same level as the majority of department heads, including the town accountant and the treasurer collector.
Open up questions. Ian, Sean, any questions, comments?
No, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think just noting, sorry, Chris, I was reading as you were speaking, so I'm sorry. I think it's just important for the public to know that the only change in 2024 was that interim finance component, when we updated, that's in our packet.
Yeah, but in 2022 is when we added and upgraded.
Right, yeah, right, right, so.
So I would move to amend the chief assessor job description as presented, and amend the classification plan to include the chief assessor at an S7, both changes to become effective upon the current employee's promotion to finance director.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Any further discussion?
Just a question, Christie, has John, did John have any input to this based on his knowledge of kind of his profession and?
Yeah, that's the one I sent out.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
John and Kim.
Yeah, well, that, that much I assumed. Thanks.
Okay, roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Keo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Item 17, September Budget Summit.
Well, this is pulling up. In May, I went to the finance committee, and we talked about ways that we could sort of better provide information ahead of the budget process. So one of the ways that we currently do that is through the, I don't think it's working. Yeah. Oh, there it goes. Thanks. Can you just get up one more time?
Just throw it into presentation mode?
Yeah, it's just, sure. So, what?
That's 2024, right?
No. 2024? Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure. Sorry.
We're planning ahead.
I was like, what?
She's thinking fiscal '25.
Okay, so, anyway, the budget summit is going to be September 26, 2024. We always do it the last Thursday of September. It is, we started it when we started the other, some of the other budget changes that we did in 2019, and it's always been sort of more narrative and sort of broader focused. And so this year, we are looking to provide sort of more numbers and do some more modeling, or do some modeling, which we haven't done before. And so we talked about this, we got in some level of feedback from the AFC in May, we talked about this at the finance team this month, and then I also brought it to the finance committee last week on Thursday, and received some input from them. And then on Monday, John and I met with the new superintendent and the director of finance administration at the schools to kind of go through this. So I think we're in a really good place, but I just wanted to show the board what we were thinking. So this is always this presentation of preliminary FY '26 budget, that's always been an agenda item. Some of the things that are new, last year, we, we did give a preliminary revenue report and some updated estimates, so we'll continue to do that. But the second bullet is new, the budget and enterprise fund assumptions. So want to give some information about excess levy capacity and Prop 2 and 1/2, I think that we should say that early and often, because I think that just sort of understanding how that, how that works, and how it applies to Westboro's finances is really important. But the, the budget and enterprise fund assumptions is really about, you know, what does it look like if we have a 2% increase, what does it look like if we have a 3% increase? It's all going to be based, we'll say this many, many times, it's all going to be based on current information, which we know will change many times throughout the budget process, but at least it's sort of leveled, so that's what we can expect. Also, really thinking about, you know, if a, if we- what we can expect. Also, really thinking about, you know, if a, if we anticipate that that the increase will be, and I'm just throwing out numbers, say 3%, and we're not comfortable with the way that looks, we would provide a data point that would say, well, 1%, if you if you took it out to 2%, 1% equals, you know, this many dollars, and how does that potentially apply to the departments? So this will be our first time, so we'll work through it and, you know, get feedback, but interested in doing that. We always talk about staffing, but identified staffing and contract impacts, as the board knows, we will, we've settled fire, but we, and all of our other contracts will be open for fiscal 26. The school, though, can do some modeling with what their obligations are in their contracts that will go extend through 26. And then identified staffing, so if there's any identified staffing changes, identifying any savings or increases for that, but also identifying any positions where we partially funded them in fiscal 25, or that they were had an alternative funding source in fiscal 25, so identifying those. Budget pressures and priorities, this is really the meat of our presentation in the past, but I think it's just some additional opportunity to identify some things that that might come through, like the school, I think, is going to talk about their transportation contract. And then this actually came from the finance committee. They asked about grants and alternative funding sources, so they're interested in hearing about that. So we'll do a presentation on that. They also ask about asked about debt, so we'll talk about debt. We'll talk about the debt strategy and sort of where we're at with that. And then we'll do sort of a broader level of capital planning because we won't have received the the latest requests, but we can look at our five-year plan and give some updates on where we're at with that long-term plan that we started working on before we had all vacancies in finance. So that's, this is really, I think, the meat of of the summit, and so we just wanted to make sure that we were sharing that with you and if there's any sort of other thoughts.
I would just want to thank you, Christie, for the continued process improvement and openness to feedback from certainly this board, you know, individually or collectively, however we give you feedback, as well as finance committee and the public. I, you know, I I think it's just, we're not, since I've been on the board, we've never sort of rested on our laurels, and I think it's really, really important. So and it tells that we care, we take it seriously, the the process as well as the outcome.
Thanks.
Continuous improvement.
Yeah.
So then just this next slide is just, we would also provide some building project updates because there's a lot. I had actually stopped at golf club building and the finance team said, well, we want to hear about the substation, even though, you know, we are all aware of sort of the very, very tight early step that we've taken. We want to make sure that we're, you know, putting that out there and being clear about that. And then it was also requested that there be an update on school building projects, which makes sense because we've had some of those also, so. And then the last one is just that we would update on ARPA funds because this is the last year where we can obligate them, so. And then things I didn't put on here that we would definitely do is we would give an update on the closeout of fiscal 24, which we always do, and then give any updates on estimates for fiscal 25, so. That's it.
That's all.
That's all.
Sounds like a good meeting.
Everyone have coffee before you arrive.
Yeah, right.
Sean and Ian, any comments or? All good? All right. All right, moving on.
That sounds great. Christie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 18.
Actually, Patrick, just one.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Christie, so this is on the 25th, is that correct?
26. 26 is a Thursday. That's what we usually do.
And what's it?
It's in, it's the one that we do in the evening on the last Thursday of September.
Okay, I just wanted to, okay.
This is the joint meeting with the AFC and the school committee.
Good.
Thinking like a, just so we know.
It's usually like 6 o'clock.
Six, okay, yeah, all right, thanks.
All right, moving on to item 18, request for select board representatives to open space and recreation plans stakeholder group.
So I think this agenda item, the conservation director is looking to put together a stakeholder group. This is another plan that we funded at a town meeting and that requires input, public input. So I, there is a public input session, but this is a request to have a select board member be part of a stakeholder meeting. So you can, she said that we could designate one to two members, so you could you could designate one to two people to be part of that group for Wednesday, October 2nd at 6:30.
So what does the board feel is appropriate, one or two, or are there any names to throw into the hat? I will put my name out there. I'm willing to do it. It's definitely a topic I'm interested in, so, but if I'd love to, I believe I'm traveling on business that week, so.
And this is just for one meeting, right?
So it's that one meeting and then another meeting later in the process, but I think just two meetings.
I'm certainly willing to do it. There's a connection to the active transportation safety liaison work a little bit, but Sean or Ian, if if you want to jump ahead of me, I'm happy to yield. Crickets.
I got a connection to.
I'm not looking to jump in front of you.
No, seriously, but.
Sean, any interest?
Now, if they're interested, I, you know, I think I'd be fine with that. And it does sound like it's also a public information component of this, so.
Yep.
We can all at some point provide.
I think we'd be, yeah, I think we could if there's two. I think when we had that opportunity, we we take.
Yep, I agree.
Always look at things differently, so.
Okay, so that was pretty quick. Anyone who want to make a motion? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, you can. Sorry, go ahead.
So I move to designate Patrick and Shelby to represent the select board at a stakeholder meeting related to development of an open space and recreation plan.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you. Item 19, request for Daryl Semino and to can you appointment to council on aging as a non-Westboro resident?
So he is currently on the council on aging and has moved out of town and is requesting to stay on the council. The board has the option to allow someone who's not a resident to be on a border committee per Article 13 of the town's bylaws.
So I would just like to add that in the letter we received, it speaks to kind of the reason for the move, but the continued involvement by Daryl to, you know, at the senior center and all. So this is someone that continues to participate in actively in programming and, you know, definitely has an interest in the benefits of the senior center. So for that reason, I would support the request and I would be happy to make a motion. All right. I would move to allow Daryl Semino, a non-resident, to continue to serve on the council on aging until their term expires on June 30, 2026.
Second. Any further discussion?
I should have mentioned that since the move, Daryl continues to attend the council on aging meetings on a regular basis. I checked them in, so.
I will say I was very compelled by his letter. I thought it was a very nice letter and showed his passion for being involved and his situation that kind of got him to this, him and his wife to this place. So I'm glad to see that he's still willing to contribute.
I was initially, candidly, I was initially like, given all we have going on with community center, I was concerned about that, but for all the reasons you just said.
Yeah, so, okay, so I got a motion and a second, so we'll do roll call. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Theo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. I'll just say thank you very much to Mr. Semino for being willing to do this work. It is an important part of our town. Lots of great work to be done, as we heard earlier tonight, so thank you. Moving on to item 20, request for appointments and reappointments. Let me just make sure I've got this correct in front of me, for Nitya Telajala to be an associate member to Assistant Devil Westboro and Mr. Kotoski to be a member of, a continued member of the waste treatment plant board.
Do you want to take those separately?
Sure, let's take those separately.
So I move to appoint Nitya Telajala as an associate member of Sustainable Westboro for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Second. Any further discussion?
Seeing none. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Theo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Go ahead, next.
Yep, so before I make this motion, which I'll support, I would, I think it's been a long, long time since this board came before this board, since the wastewater treatment plant board came before the board to give any sort of update. And I think it would be helpful, as I recall, on a relatively recent town meeting, there was a very large appropriation for improvements. So I'd like to understand where that's at and what's going on, and I think it would be important. So with that, I would say I would move to reappoint Rick Kotoski as representative from Westboro to the wastewater treatment plant board for a term to expire September 30, 2027.
Second. Any further discussion?
Ian?
Johnson, yes, sorry.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. And again, thank you, Mr. Kotoski, to be willing to do this work, and I would agree and glad you brought that up about the meeting, the need for them to come before us. That's great. All right, moving on to item 21, request to approve meeting minutes of July 17, 2024, session one and session two, and July 23, 2024, August and August 1, 2024.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes?
Thank you, Seela.
As always, great job. Sean and Ian, you guys have reversed yourselves on the screen, so now I'll start with Sean. Sean?
Theo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. And town manager report.
So for some of our larger projects, folks should definitely be visiting the spotlight section on the homepage of our website because we've been putting a lot of information up there, but one in particular, the community center, as we mentioned earlier, you'll have a meeting on August 29th where you'll be presented with some alternative designs. And then following that on September, September 9, in the Forbes Great Hall, we'll have a community charrette. And then on Tuesday, September 10, at 2 o'clock, we'll have a senior-focused charrette as a follow-up to that meeting. So these are some additional ways to get engaged at the next level once we have those initial designs. Also, for the regional emergency communication center, the architect for that center has gone out to bid. That also, there's a lot of information on our website related to that. And then the civic leadership academy, we had 15 applicants that have been accepted, and they'll begin on September 3. In community development, the sustainability coordinator submitted a grant application for the energy efficiency conservation block grant. This application requests $50,000 to develop a comprehensive roadmap for deploying electric vehicle charging stations at municipally-owned properties with a phased implementation plan extending over the next five to 10 years. In the finance department, we're pleased to welcome Tina Cody as the new part-time administrative assistant and Zuleika Rodriguez as the administrative assistant payroll clerk. So now we are at full staff in the treasurer collector's office and in the town accountant's office. And now we have to post for a chief assessor. In the library, the library, the new library director, Kate Caraccio, began on Monday, August 12. So she was previously the director at the Wilmington Memorial Library and deputy director of Worcester Public Libraries. I know she's already been at the farmer's market, so reach out and say hi to her. Also, they have an open house on Friday, September 6, from 5 to 7 at the library. The planning department's working on finalizing the downtown plan and the housing production plan. Both will be completed and available before the end of August. They've also been working with DPW on the Otis Street corridor project, which includes section one of the BWALT that's currently at 75% design. The West Park Drive Extension Project, which includes a portion of the BWALT, will also be completed this month. That was also a MassWorks grant. A ribbon cutting to celebrate the completion of the first portion of the BWALT will be held in mid-September. Works also underway for the design of section two, and a public information meeting regarding the BWALT in general will be held on September 11 at 6:00 PM in the Great Hall. There's two zoning articles on the horn, as we mentioned. The first plan, the presentation will happen September 3 at your joint meeting with the planning board, but the first planning board hearing for these will be on September 17. In collaboration with the community development department, planning is reviewing the recent Affordable Homes Act and the amendments to 48 to determine if any modifications are necessary to Westboro zoning bylaw. In the police department, they're finishing onboarding the three officers, which I mentioned, so they'll start the academy on September 9 with a graduation date of February 14. They've also been sending several different officers to multiple training opportunities. In the public works department, the DPW welcomes Sebastian Hernandez to the highway department and Rich Nealan to the cemetery department. DPW has filed a claim with the PFAS litigation. It's unclear at this point what we would receive in settlement, but they've been working on that with us. The first workshop to review and refine the sewer flow table, which was presented on July 23 to the select board, will occur in September. And then we'll have other workshops in September and October with a completion target of December. And the town clerks office are busy preparing for the September 3 state primary election. All residents who have questions about elections are encouraged to call the town clerk's office. Oh, sorry. And Youth and Family Services is hosting the annual back-to-school drive giveaway for Westboro families in need, held at the Forbes Community Building Wednesday, this Wednesday, 10 to 3, Thursday, 9 to noon, and 5 to 8, and then Friday, 9 to 11:30. For information, you can call the Youth and Family Services office.
Terrific, thank you. Just open up to the board for anyone who would like to provide issues and correspondence. Sean or Ian? Go ahead, Ian.
Sure, I can just give a quick update, and Christie hit a lot of mine already, but municipal building committee, we did, we're being meeting every other week, especially around the golf club project. We did at our last meeting, choose two designs for the architects to do further work on. One was a renovation, one was a tear-down rebuild. Our meeting this coming Thursday morning, 8:00 AM, will cover kind of the architects coming back with kind of the more design, pricing, et cetera, on those options. So definitely making progress, as well as following along with the other projects that Christie mentioned, the community center and the rec.
Thank you.
That's it.
Sean, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right.
Nothing tonight, but stay tuned for September 10.
All right.
Really more just kind of community-related updates, so just want to, first of all, thank all of the Rangers on track for their work today in the community. They were all out and about and were all smiling, and I know they made a great impact to the community service needs across the community, so awesome job there. Reminding folks, school starts next week, and just to be aware of that, and, you know, kids can be out and about and traffic's going to pick up, and let's all be patient and friendly and be the great community that we are. This Saturday at the Nelson Ball Pickleball Courts is a pickleball tournament, and while the tournament is fully sold out, and this is under, through Westboro Connects is offering it, there's a learn-to-play session that will be about an hour, be from 12 to 1. It's free, donations are accepted, and there are also lots of free games, will be food available and that kind of thing. So it's an all-day tournament. Weather's going to be beautiful, guaranteed it, and would love to see members of the community come out and enjoy that. And then finally, WASA is hosting its rowing fundraiser event to raise money for its high school scholarships because of the success of last year. to raise money for its high school scholarships. Because of the success of last year's event, they were able to add a scholarship. So, I think they're up to five now. And that event is on October 19. I was asked to extend an invitation to the board if they want to form a team of four to six members. I cannot be there. I would love to, but I cannot. But I was asked to pass along. So, no motion needed for that. But do give it consideration. But it's a fun event, whether you choose to row or not. It's lots going on that day. So, you can check it out on their website.
Thank you, Shelby. I'll just echo the appreciation from the high school students. We got a call at the house at 6:30 this morning from a high school student, looking how to get engaged with some of the work that Youth and Family Services has been doing. So, yeah, there was a lot of eagerness there. So, I'll give you all an update in regards to Saint Samuel Westboro. As you know, we're moving forward in the work towards the climate leaderships program and the specialized stretch energy code. The committee was hoping to be part of Cohort 1 later this year, but they're deferring due to the concerns over the state's rollout and specifically between BBRS and DOER. DOER has made some updates in regards to the specialized stretch energy code. And they're now getting feedbacks from statewide building inspectors. And it's going out for wider review this month. So, there's no urgent need for Westboro to join the first cohort. So, we're looking to rekind of target that for next year. Also, the committee or the team has been working on the ZEV policy, which is also another action of the climate leaders program. So, I want to say provide an appreciation to Kristi and her staff and the various different department heads who've been working with us on the ZEV policy, continue doing work through language. And we're actually now sending it over to DOER to get their review, which is part of the process.
What's a ZEV?
So, this is the zero emissions vehicle policy.
Okay, thank you.
So, sorry. Got to get with the lingo here.
I know, sounded cool.
Yeah, that's cool.
I wasn't on board.
I thought it was another generation.
I know, right.
Generation ZEV.
Generation ZEV, nice. So, that's moving forward. We expect, once we get the final, hopefully, the final review from DOER, that we bring it back and then bring it to the school committee for the review and approval and input and whatnot. And then, eventually, we'll bring it back to the select board. So, still more work to be done there, but making progress. As earlier mentioned, the EV Expo is on September 29, 2 to 5 Sunday. Jeff Levine, who was here earlier tonight, and Ben Bowers, our sustainability coordinator, are looking for folks to help volunteer. So, please reach out to Jeff and Ben, specifically to help man the information table, if you feel that you can provide a good, be a good resource for that, or direct traffic, set up and tear down and check in. And then, finally, Saint Samuel Westboro has been working on updates to the master plan application committee report. And that committee, through Jenny, our planning director, is working to present, just like she did last year, at the annual town meeting. So, they're soliciting feedback, one of which is from Saint Samuel Westboro. So, work being done there as well. And that's it. Kind of get a motion for executive session.
I move, we enter into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with contract, for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Patrick Purcell and Christopher Pant. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Furious Development Group LLC, the Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285, CV 01281, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro v. Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number 19, TL 000768, if the chair determines that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC, the Town of Westboro, Etal, US District Court, CA Number 4:23, CV 12017-MRG, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss the strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court Case Number 23-40709, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Residents of Westboro Station/Northland TPLP LLC at 100 Charleston Meadow Drive, Worcester Land Court Case Number 22, MISC 000445-DRR, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 231 Turnpike Road, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of July 17, 2024, and July 23, 2024.
And I declare that an open session would have detrimental effect on the town's litigating and negotiating positions, and that the board will not reconvene an open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. May I get a second? Did we miss something?
I went off the printed. Wait, hold on. I went off the printed.
Well, it's on, the text is on.
Where?
It's on the last one.
Says 231 Turnpike Road.
It's on the...
It's on the one that was published.
Okay.
Okay, so let me...
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Okay, it wasn't on the printed one.
It's not on the printed.
Sorry. So, I modify the motion to include under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the negotiating position of the public body, referencing TIFF, T-I-F-F, agreement for 23 Bridle Lane, Westboro.
Now, may I get a second to the amended motion?
Second. Marshall, seconds.
Roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Eo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much, Westboro TV again. And everyone, have a great night.